All right, we're going to bring the meeting to order. It's six P M on February twenty four, twenty twenty five. This is a new session of the Flumeth City Council. We need to do a roll call. Okay, we're gonna start with a roll call from the city.
Right, Jessica Andrade.
Present.
Diane Crawford.
Here.
Christopher Erwin.
Here.
Brent Caseman.
Here.
Marissa Nielsen.
Here.
Ricky Salsa.
Present.
Christopher McMoran.
Here. Wonderful. Well, as you know, there's no, it's not a real agenda tonight because there's sort of one thing on it. Oh, two things. We have our, what's the second thing?
The county emergency management.
Oh, yes. We have one very large item and then an update at the end, just to finish up our strategic planning this afternoon. I think just to get us started, we left off, I think, on sort of looking at theme three being removed and then replaced with, what is now being four or? What is it now? Theme three, I guess.
A lot of the theme three projects are rolled into theme two or three.
Right, okay.
Those that weren't directly tied to those got put in theme.
Yeah.
The new theme four, which is theme five for like a public safety type.
Yeah. So I think just let's start off maybe then on theme, the new theme three.
The page.
Uh, page, oh.
Five.
I guess minus.
Five.
One sixty seven or whatever.
This page, the one that's all red.
Theme three, maybe well-being and quality of life.
Yeah.
So.
We're wrong, we're wrong.
Yeah, as a recap, we renamed it just to incorporate some of that feedback from our earlier discussions around wanting it to be more about that kind of like, community aspect, not just like neighborhoods and trying to incorporate sort of the culture and, and livability and everything in there. So with that, should we just go down the list or does anyone have anything they wanna jump in on? Okay. So we'll start at the top then. If Flumeth has affordable housing options, goal three point one. I feel like we're all on board with that as far as I'm aware.
Okay, for this section priority wise, housing was the very top and it was on top of everybody's list of each of the groups. I'm just trying to capture that. I have a little concern about the wording of the objective. I think this is taken from previous section. I'm, again, trying to look at this as being kind of project based and this feels kind of more like, you know, a little passive. So if anybody's got some rewording or recommendations on a good objective for, helping to ensure that Flumeth has affordable housing options, that's a little less passive than three point one point one. I'm all ears.
Promote instead of encourage?
Where?
Why are we talking about word changes? Are you talking about changing the whole entire thing?
So you're saying you think courage, for example, is a more of a passive word?
Well, even so, I've got three point one one is ensure the city's housing policies encourage multiple housing options for low to medium households at life stages. Just in like ensuring, what does that look like if we're going to ensure that? If I challenge you to ensure that the city's housing policies allow for that, what would you actually do?
Counselor.
And I would like maybe to start out with work. Then that we're actually trying to do, work to ensure the city housing and encourage, creative. Building, I don't know.
Yeah.
But just to ensure, but working to ensure I can sell stronger. Practically promote multiple housing options.
What about, adopt new city housing policies that encourage? That would be better.
Yeah, that, okay.
I like that, actually. Or even invite? Was it encourage, invite? Invite. Invite housing developer? Yeah, oh, invite, okay. Yeah, and all of that sounds good to me.
Well, we're fairly well tasked with the policy end of it, right? So.
And I mean, the planning commission's already working on that, right?
Planning commission's looking at new development code, but those will all come to the city council. So again, this, or an action item, it's like, yeah, we need to proactively be encouraging the planning commission to continue that work. And then when it comes to, you as a body, you need to be looking at it through the guise of, these are gonna be new policies and they may be a little controversial. There's maybe some, you know, quarter acre piece of property with my big fence and my big yard and have my space. And that's how all of Flumeth looks like, right? Be like Millersburg, just everybody has their big lot and big house and that's the neighborhood that, you have to have because that's all the housing they have there. Or are we going to look to adopt policies that allow for different mix, different housing types?
Okay.
It's, I think adopt new housing policy sounds really good.
Yeah.
We needed the encourage piece. I don't know if that's strong enough.
Right.
More encourage.
Yeah.
So that planning, I don't, that.
Entice?
That invite was like a, I don't know. Invite and promote, create and increase that inviting.
Okay. Other objectives? Other than that? Jessica, counselor on drive.
Thanks. With regards to the whole housing conversation, agreed about the adopting policies, like we've been leading up to this with, you know, all the housing needs analysis and like all those studies. We have suggestions from the consultants. And we have other opportunities to, help create more affordable housing if we partner up with Hope and their programs in some way. So I think the adopt policies, like, you know, actually having the conversation, about all of the, the facts that we have is important. Yes, it's happening with the planning commission. And I don't know if this is necessarily a topic for conversation right now, but I am curious as to how, the Housing and Economic Development Committee might play a part in that conversation as well. I would think that, I don't know who's all on that committee, but I would think that it would be good additional input, from a wider variety of community members who can help provide some of that insight as well. So, yeah, or whatever that's worth.
I will say that the action item that's on here was a carryover from the previous one. It's, it sounds good, but the reality is, all those people on the city council had an application for upzoning from R two to R three, and felt voted that it didn't really warrant the upzone from R two to R three, although it would have precisely done what this action item says it would have done. But there was some uncertainty with it. There wasn't an actual plan in place. And so, on that application, the city council at least felt like the upzone wasn't warranted, justified, et cetera, et cetera. But yet we have an action item that was kind of contradictory to that. So that may not be the best objective to say, hey, as a blanket policy, we wanna encourage or, allow for upzoning, et cetera, et cetera, whatever that zone, that language might be. I just, I was, it was a, it was an, it was an action item that I intentionally didn't bring up during the public hearing, and that process, because I felt like it was contrary to where the city council was here, was hearing based on the public comment and everything else. So.
To follow up. To follow up on that, thank you for the additional clarification. I wonder if that is something like a pre, like a, a first conversation could be, if I remember correctly, there were potentially concerns about, things like impact on traffic, on water or whatever. So maybe it's having the conversation about, well, what, things need to be squared away in order for us to, you know, not fast track, but like, you know, do the thing that we want to do, which is allow for more varied housing types and for low and medium, income. Households. So like, I, um, I don't know, because I know that we're constrained by laws as well as, just, well, mostly laws, actually, I could think. So how, I, I don't know. Does, does that make sense? Or is there?
I'm gonna call in counselor Erwin. Uh, it made sense to me, and I'm not sure that it applies to this objective, but I, implement or maintain infrastructure that supports future development of low, you know, begin or work towards, finding the appropriate projects. I don't know what the right word, you know, something to that effect, like look for opportunities to get places ready because, while I wasn't on the council yet, I listened to that and it, like, Chris is right, it was a good opportunity to upzone, but it was also kind of like, not the best, singular example either. It was like, well, we could, you could have, but it was also like, kind of a lot of the reasons why it, isn't zoned that way, we're still present and so.
Yeah, like, we got like, like take proactive steps to develop infrastructure to.
Well, yeah, I'm thinking of like connectivity was a barrier, traffic safety was a barrier.
Yeah, what I'm even thinking, it ties in with like our legislative ask and everything.
Yeah.
Just making that more of a council priority of not just like waiting until a developer. Comes to it, we have to say no, but you know, proactively out what.
Yeah.
What barriers could be.
Probably my part two tied actually to that first one one objective thought would be, sounds like we've done quite a bit of footwork to figure out the, what policy is gonna, best encourage that. Uh, councillor Andrade was, you know, there's been surveys and all that kind of thing. So, it seems like it's sort of a two part, right? Like look at that stuff. The objective in my mind would be to look at those things and then, apply policy that works with those suggestions as well as possible. Or some, I mean, that sounded wishy washy and kind of unambitious, but something a little cleaner, not like as we could do the best that we can to do, you know, it could be a little more, affirmative to.
Try our hardest.
Senator Andrade mentioned about partnering. Is the, are there partnerships that we could have that would help us to promote, income for lower and middle? I mean, that would be interesting to me. And that seems like an action item, does it not? If we could partner with, actively partner with an association or something that would help us to achieve those goals?
Yeah.
Or secondary, another thought, if I may, we talked for a time about, was it Main Street or near Main Street where it would be business below and housing above? Am I mistaken on that?
No, I think it's, I was trying to find where it was in here, but the fourteenth street one and then twentieth street we worked on a little bit. We had a,
Ever that.
Nonprofit developer that we're working with, and I would say we're still kind of working with, although it's been a little bit quiet. I put more generally on that note. I have developers, but it could be developers and other agencies, but invite developers, other agencies to work with the city to develop affordable housing. Period. That's the objective, right?
That's a good, yeah.
And I think that would tie in whether it's a developer themselves that wanna come in and they wanna help apply for the state funding or whatever it might be. Or a nonprofit or another agency that wants to help with that. I think it'd be great. And then to, I think it was councillor Andrade's point, I jotted another potential objective would be to identify and prioritize, infrastructure needed to support future housing projects. We do a capital improvement plan, but, we don't always specifically identify what projects are needed for potential future housing projects. We just say it's needed because of aging infrastructure. There's another project. I think we're a little bit more deliberate in developing this year's capital improvement plan. And we look at priority projects based on, maybe not just need, but on housing need that might leapfrog a few priorities over others that are needed just, because the pipe's old as opposed to, well, this pipe's old and it's gonna support housing. Might give it a little bit of a leg up.
Like I think just in general, like trying to be more proactive, because I feel like cities are often more like reactive to things, you know, of like, oh, someone submitted an application, let's figure out what to do with that. Or like, oh, this pipe broke, I guess we should put in a new one. And like, I'm being a little reductive, but you get my, I'm just like, trying to think ahead of like, you know, before the problems arise, before the application comes in, that sort of proactive approach, but, yeah.
In that way, they're in there for new construction.
Right, yeah, yeah, I guess.
We have the data for what might be missing. As soon as a landlord comes in and says, I want to develop this, can we go somewhere and just look up and says, oh, the, the, the plumbing is good here or the sewer, sewer is good there and water's there. We would need, that we can proactively document that prior to the meeting that they propose. Have all that facts. And I think that's a proactive way of preparing to accept or closer to accept something like that.
Yeah, we, we do that now on any development of substance. We do, we require a pre-application meeting, where they sit down with the fire district, the public works department, planning, city engineer, and we'll spend an hour, two hours going through just what you mentioned. We look at all of the infrastructure, we look at fire needs. We, we look at public works needs, we look at the planning side of it. And so we identify early on for applicants before they move forward, what the list of infrastructure is gonna be, both onsite and offsite, right? Things like trying to identify where there's bottlenecks and, offsite improvements that aren't done yet that might, you know, impede their ability to move forward. And in fact, part of our discussion with some of our legislators this year was just that, is we have, property owners who have come to the city and said, I wanna do this. And they said, well, we don't have sewer up there yet. So until the sewer gets put in, that's not gonna do you a lot of good dynamics in the city, because we don't have sewer service that can service your property yet. And they said, well, then we'll wait. I don't mind actually, city pay, city property taxes and not be able to develop my property. I'll just wait till that line gets installed. So, we, I think we are proactive on that front. What I'm talking about is even before that of trying to identify, based on some of the new zoning that the planning commission is looking at, identifying those areas and making sure that our capital projects are matching those areas for, the higher density, the more affordable housing areas. And that which is gonna be a little of a, of a update. It'll probably be an update to our water master plan. It'll be an update to some of our municipal plans because that zoning has changed. So we'll need to reconfigure our assumptions for future demand in certain areas of town that are gonna be different than what they are today when you do those own changes. Especially where we've got significant areas that are changing zoning, right? So I, I think it's a good objective to have and I think staff will have an easy time of dropping some, action items that we can take care of in the next year or two there because there are things we're already kind of thinking of doing. But again, having it as priority and in the strategic plan will be really helpful to get clear guidance that that's a priority for the council.
Nobody. I have not met any citizens yet that want congested housing in their neighborhood. But again, we know there's a need. Is there a way for us to know how many people work here that can't afford to live here or cannot live in town? Do we have any information on that? Because I know there was, we're about teachers and firefighters and, stuff that maybe couldn't live here because it was too expensive or no houses.
Anecdotally, I'll buy a hot chocolate and I can give you a list of all the people that I talked to in a, any given week or month, but, I'm sure this is assists out there. But I don't know anything top of my head for Flumeth specifically.
Well, that might fit somewhere as another objective is to begin the conversation with the community that higher density housing is coming, one way or the other, and it, they shoot hornet in around the town in areas that we can't plan for.
You wanna keep your police officers?
Yeah.
Have to.
Have places.
For them to live, yeah.
Yeah, and the caution there, and this crept into last Tuesday's planning commission meeting. I wasn't in attendance, I watched it the next morning. But, you know, higher density doesn't necessarily relate to lower income housing either, right? And, and so we can't make the assumption that, you know, going from R three low dense or R one low density to R two medium density means we're decreasing property values or we're gonna have lower quality homes, built in and around those neighborhoods. In fact, sometimes it's just the opposite, right? If you can get, town homes and those town homes might be, you know, five hundred thousand dollars apiece. They could be three hundred thousand dollars apiece. The size of the home doesn't dictate at all the quality of the home that's being built and the amenities that are added and, and whatnot either, right? So, I mean, go look at the, this is a horrible example. I can't believe I'm using it. Go look at the Pearl District and tell me how small those lots are and those units are. And it's very, very expensive housing, but yet it's very small relative to Portland in general, right? So, we need to be careful that we're not automatically thinking we need higher density housing in order to have more affordable housing. When we talk about subsidized affordable housing that's somehow discounted by a state program or federal program or even city, funding, those typically tend to be apartments because that does tend to be the most cost effective way to get a lot of people, housing provided in a more economic and affordable way. But that doesn't necessarily mean that higher density is going to be, and all of higher density is more affordable. It just means that there's going to be more housing available in that same amount of space. So we just wanna be, we don't wanna get caught in that trap, I guess, especially as we're looking at, looking to rezone properties. You can't think, well, you know, this is a spendy area town. We wanna keep it an expensive area town, so therefore we have to keep low density here. Not always, right? And, and we need housing of all types throughout the community, so.
I started raising my hand and then I realized.
The one that's called.
Well, I was just gonna say, I pulled up our housing needs analysis. I think, and it talks a little bit about your question. It just says, Flumeth has unmet need for affordable housing. About seventy percent of households that rent and twenty one percent of households that own their home are cost burdened. And then it expands on that. It's saying that, that newly built multifamily housing ranging from about fifteen hundred to fifteen hundred dollars per month. And about forty percent of Flumeth's households are unable to afford this rent cost. As cited above, many of these renter households are cost burdened. So.
I think it's even higher now.
Sure, and this is from, got about forty percent since that. Yeah, yeah, this is from twenty twenty one, I think. So, anyway, just say, we do have some numbers on that.
So can an action be educate the community on housing needs of Flumeth? I mean, I think we've done a little bit of that. Because I've, I remember discussing through surveys that we need more housing, but, can that be a, a, an action?
How do you, how would we do that? That's a discussion for later, sorry.
I mean, just, just publishing it and, you know, on the internet or on, in the paper or whatever.
Sure.
Would help a great deal. I mean, I just know there's a lot of, I mean, they all glare at me whenever we pass. It's like, oh, well, we really do it. And it's, it's, if they understood that we're not inviting thousands of people to come move to Flumeth, we're trying to house the people that are here.
We talked about living wage job, you know, like encouraging industry with living wage jobs. And one of the things that, like, they're not gonna expand a mill if they can't get, if, work there because they gotta drive for an hour to get to work.
Yeah.
That kind of, you know, that, you know, it takes us right off of the, consideration for some of the projects, I'm sure. They're like, oh, we could do it out somewhere just endless.
Or maybe they'll expand the mill, but they won't have anyone to like work in restaurants or anything. Counselor.
Kenneth's Commons on fifty third and call it, and Country Club. How, what, how was that funded? Do you happen to know how?
I don't know, top of my head on that one. No.
Those are the houses that, they're independent houses and the rent is based on income.
Oh, really?
And a lot of married students live there from O S U and friends that have rented there. I just wondered how they did that.
Like a fund out?
Thank you. It's, do you know which one I'm talking about?
I do.
Okay, fifty thirty, thank you.
Okay.
I heard rumor that the state was looking into the, or the organizations that are buying up all the houses for sale and then, because they own so many of them, the rent goes up and there's no other option for people. Is there any action on that? Or can we do something here about that?
I don't know the answer to either of those questions. I also don't know, do we know if that's even a thing we're really seeing here?
Yes, I do not.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I know.
Talking about like.
You're talking about like big, like.
Like out of state corporations that are purchasing.
Okay. Oh, well, then sure, that might, okay, okay. That wasn't like Blackrock type thing.
Blackrock's probably on the list of.
Yeah.
People that own the companies do that.
I don't, have you dated on that? I don't know.
I'm not making up, yeah, I heard that, right?
No.
I did. I do remember and thinking, oh, good. I'm glad they're gonna do something because I've watched, my whole neighborhood is bought up and it's being rented for a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, it's a difficult thing when there's a shortage of supply for a basic need, like a place to live. That makes it really tough. I'm glad it's a big priority for the council because I do think there are things we can do to be a little more proactive. So, I think this is a great start. I don't wanna spend all of our time tonight on this one topic, but I think it's a, a good start. We can bring these objectives back and, and again, staff will fill in some action items. We can, really laser in on things we can actually do over the next year or two. Good. Should we go to the next goal?
Yeah. All right, we're getting rid of maintain optimal levels of transit service, because I think we put that down into mobile. Um, and then getting rid of park, search, man, and community events, because you'll see community events down with the next one. My personal thoughts on this next one, I think we should get rid of three point two point two, three point two point three, and three point two point five. And just keep three point two point one and three point two point four, because I think everything else can kind of go under those. Or it's repetitive, I think having a written policy for startup of community events is the same as three point two point three. And three point two point five. And then, I think, community gathering places. Action center, um, so I don't know if it needs to be a separate one, but yeah, Councilperson.
Could someone explain to me the difference between recreation center and the objective two point three point three, which is a community center for recreation? Did they cover that? I miss, I'm sorry.
You know, I know, I know our city manager.
There's a little insight there, words matter. Community centers cannot be funded with urban renewal dollars, but recreation centers can be.
So it might be a recreation center where the community gathers.
Sorry, I wasn't aware of that, I apologize.
Yeah, there's some, you know, it's, it's a verbiage thing.
Okay, right, sorry, I apologize.
But we're not assuming that we're gonna use urban renewal dollars to fund any of those structures, but if you are.
Why would we make it so we couldn't?
So keep the options open and call it a recreation center, or just don't name it anything yet.
I do agree with the mayor regarding to streamlining those, I think we have so many objectives that feel repetitive. And I think unnecessary, so I agree a little bit that we can streamline those and not have unnecessary verbiage and.
I agree, it might be a little premature, we, we've talked a lot about doing this visioning process and, and we don't wanna come into that overly scripted, like here's the things that we want to build. I think it's good hosts of that conversation, we wanna be a little more open going into it on what does the community think that we should prioritize and. Eventually.
But I think keeping just the places and the events. Sorry, Councilor.
I, I probably have two things, but create a written policy for funding startup, um. Does that have to do with the recreation center, or is that our events, like the Memorial Day thing and the pride thing, and we just have to have a written policy? And so that's kinda different than the recreation center, right?
Yeah, they're like two different things, so my thought was just keep the, create a written policy and keep developed community gathering places. Just cause it's, I think it's.
It declutters it a lot.
It declutters it, and just for that, the written policy thing, I mean, I think that's come up several times in the past, where people have wanted money. And we don't have like a written set of criteria, so then it's always kind of this ad hoc thing and. Which is, I mean, you know, we are empowered to do that, but it's cleaner if we have, okay, if you meet these criteria, the council will likely give you funding, if you don't, they like, we won't, kinda thing, so.
It's a limitation for funding.
Right, so. Okay, does that seem good? Is there anything else you wanna think about for that one, or, I mean, I agree with Chris, so just, I think. If we're gonna be doing more of this big community wide visioning thing, I think maybe we wanna leave that intentionally a little sparse for now. And then we can add to it as we go, but.
Yeah, leave it sparse, maybe even put a, an objective to. Kinda lean in the other direction and say like, let's gather what, you know, ask what they want.
Oh, right, okay.
And it probably doesn't. Or support the visioning process, like that as an objective is to help, you know, identify. Community priority for building spaces or something like that, maybe that's better than just, you know, community gathering spaces would be.
I agree, yeah, a little bit more focused.
Absolutely, I had a conversation with somebody, I don't even know who it was, about the skate park, and they said, well, we want different things and not a skate park. And I said, well, the community can have some input on that, but that would be a way to do that, right?
Okay, should we move on to three point three? Does that work for everyone? Okay, three point three, Fulham with Community Library and Fulham with Museum are thriving, and this is, I think, just a new one, right? We're not replacing anything, yeah, um, but I think there's a few of these things, like we already had supporting. The library in the strategic, the sort of a new slash consolidated one. Um, so we just have complete the expansion project for the library, support the cultural and social impact of the library, and participate in the. Museum's efforts to improve accessibility and.
It was, uh, they're looking at accessibility and they're also looking at their grounds improvements. It's kinda like ground, like gathering spaces, yeah. I think it's accessibility on the ground.
I'll just, oh, sorry, I'm, I'm driving, so I can't raise my hand right now, but, um, I also know that the. Museum is very interested in just partnering and making the museum a more central kind of. Location for community event outreach activities, community building, so. Um, I think it would be a great opportunity for the city to partner with them in more stuff.
I was gonna say the same, like even just like, not make it as specific as like accessibility. Just pay the museum's efforts to.
Engage with the community.
To become a better community asset, or just, you know, something of like, the, the, I'm, the semantics at that point.
I, I think the accessibility is pretty bad, and for people in a wheelchair, they have to go in the back, right, and.
I'm not saying we wouldn't be doing that, but just sort of a broad statement of like, make it a better place for the community, which I think would include.
In which it is a goal of theirs.
I like the specifics, cause I feel like those are good tasks and projects they're working on right now that we can support in specific ways. And I think, you know, goal kind of goes a level higher, right, just working on it. The, that they're thriving, and we would look for ways to help ensure that they're thriving. But I like the objectives, being able to say accessibility been approved, check, grounds have been approved, check, what's next to help them be thriving? And there may be new objectives that will come into that new one in the future. I feel like three, three, two is a little more wishy washy and maybe isn't needed.
Or did A, define that and then say, did we, when did we do that? Like, when did we complete it?
Well, we had the Black History Month, um, presentation there, and if we could do more of that sort of thing, that would certainly be a cultural. Um, impact on the library and our community.
Is the focus, I mean, I think the focus is the library expansion project right now. So not that those aren't important, but I would think that most of the efforts would be put toward helping with that at this time, maybe.
What, uh, so, this is a totally different thing that I'm about to say. But like, I know the other thing we had talked about is like, sort of, like. Being engaged in or somehow be like, being part of the conversations on like the long term future of the library district. And sort of what, and I wonder if that's a more of an actionable goal than support the impact. Just, because I think if, if they're already gonna start having those conversations, I feel like we wanna make sure we're a part of it.
Well, I just wanna be clear that I think that we should support the cultural. In fact, it just doesn't feel like, it doesn't fit the SMART framework very well. How are we like, what is, how would we measure that? Needs like to fall under good governance.
And, I mean, I think the other thing for me is just like, we don't do, like, the, the library district does all their programming and they're, you know, it's like.
We're gonna do, just, we'd like you to do this thing.
Your flyer up, kinda, like, I think, whereas, but then I think because of that, if we can be engaged in the future of the district.
So we're good with the first objective, I reworded a little bit, to complete the library redesign and expansion project. It is more than just an expansion, I, I wanna hit on that early, especially when you see the price tag, it's like, it's how much? Add a room and do an entire redesign of the interior to better serve. Better, um, a better space for everybody, so redesign and expansion project. Based on what we just talked about, how do you feel about support efforts to improve library services throughout the region? And then the last one, kinda leave that as it is, but leave grounds.
That works, yeah. Great. We move on to three point four, the city has great multimodal transportation options, and Councilor Drady, I'll try to like read you about that. Three point four point one, increase pedestrian connectivity throughout the city. With an action of expanding the bike ped path along Chapel Drive between Thirteenth and Fifteenth Street. And then objective three point four point two, increase bus ridership through scheduling and amenity improvements. With an action of complete bus stop amenities outlined in the transportation system plan. That sound good to me. Like, there's other things I wanna add, but I also don't wanna, I'm, I'm sure you're shocked to hear that, Chris. But now's the time to do action.
No, I think objectives would be fine, and then actions, you can shoot me a private email. I'll talk to my staff about them and see how.
We wanna tie this with the, what we were talking about earlier about. Making places kinda. Upzoning. Um, is that relevant, like focus on projects that would enable future upzoning? Ubiquitous, and then, yeah, I was just particularly like pedestrian connectivity, it was one of the ones that I thought of.
Yeah, I mean, not to pre-script things we're already working on, but again, just to matter capturing priorities. Some of the code language that we're looking at to review is very clear about amenities, pedestrian connectivity. That right now are recommendations that are gonna be turned into requirements for future development. Some are required right now, but some of it, it's negotiations with the developer on, you know, I, I think, you know, the subdivision. It's next to the middle school, that new bike path, pedestrian path, it wasn't required, other than staff said. In order to show that you've got pedestrian connectivity, we can't make the students walk all the way down to Chapel and loop around, you've gotta put a path in here, and they agreed to it. So was it required? Kind of, could they have argued it wasn't required? Absolutely.
Yeah, and like done it, or done it, the, the thing, and then like.
But, you know, as the developer comes in, they always wanna be on the good side of the city, especially city staff planner that are gonna be writing the staff report. And so they'll typically do some concessions like that, that are gonna cost a lot of money and are gonna benefit the overall development of the, you know, they want the value of their homes to be good as well. So that developer specifically was willing to do a few extra things to add up connectivity, but. Um, what we're looking to do again is strengthen our code language requirements, so those types of connections to schools. Other walking paths will be required, not just a recommendation, right now the language is a little loose.
Should we put that as?
So, that's what I'm saying, as an objective could be to, you kind of do an audit or a review of our development code to ensure. Um, future developments are required to prioritize pedestrian and bicycle connectivity.
Yeah, that was actually. Oh, yeah, please, just go ahead.
Sorry, I was, I was gonna say, I, I love that, like, I feel like anything we can, anytime we can put something down in a written policy. The better it is for us to not only like remember, but, you know, accountability and transparency. I think that's really important, um, for all of us and for community members to trust. You know, local government, especially in such difficult times right now, um, but. Uh, I have to go unfortunately, um, I just want to really quickly before I go say that. Um, when you get to the safety part, um, if you have. Like, I have, I have thoughts on how that evidence-based traffic safety plan and stuff like that could work, um. And, uh, I just, I think it's really important to collect evidence and be able to, you know, come up with a plan to do something, and it would. It wouldn't be, it would be a large effort, but I, I think it would be worth it, it would, it fall, sorry. It would fall into the, um, what, uh, Mayor McMoran was saying about the, um, you know, being proactive. And so I'll just say that for now, but thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
The question, do we, in, we have to three point four point two, it talks about scheduling. So we actually set up the schedule for those, our city does, that scheduling piece?
We have some limitations based on cost, but, yes, we, we. Corvallis Transit works with us to help set that up, but if we want to reduce ridership or, or reduce. Well, I mean, time slot, I won't swear nobody's riding, we can do that to save some money, we can add slots other places, so. You know, we've got a little constraint, they contract, they have a contract for their drivers, and so there's some guidelines there as well that we need to follow, but. Yeah.
And how, who is it that makes that, that looks at that charting of when it's used and when it's most needed and, and makes those scheduling adjustments?
I review that pretty often, um, with the Corvallis Transit Service, we'll take that to Public Works Department before we make any. Significant changes, um, it's come here to the city council before major changes, I mean. I have some ideas of like the next times that we'll expand it, as new development comes into town and more, it's, you know, splintering up and going up Nineteenth Street, for example, and the. RV park comes in, and now that we've got the expansion of Forest Meadows. It's expanded, but all the houses aren't in yet, but eventually, when those houses come in and the RV parks in, it's gonna make, financially, it's gonna make sense. So, um, you know, those types of things come into play, I've got a very recent request to look at. When we're headed eastbound rather than staying on the highway, um, to splinter off and go south of. Um, Fitness Over Fifty and Chenard's there, and see if we can get a stop there, cause we have a lot of our residents that are going there and back, and would like to be able to take the bus. But we're, we're actively looking at that right now, and that's something we can bring to the Public Works Committee and take a look at, same time, we try not to be overly. Bureaucratic with it, but we, you know, it takes a lot of money to reprint the schedules and get everybody used to a new schedule, so we don't just do it on the fly. Either, um, so yeah, there's a, I mean, there's a process to go through.
Thank you, appreciate that. I have a question, um, I had a assistant talk to me about wheelchairs on the bus, they said there was only spot for one. And their brothers in a wheelchair, so they were concerned that what happens if they get there and that spot's taken? And they've got a wheelchair rider that needs to use it.
I don't know, that's a good question. There's also the, like, the Benton area transit.
Right, and there, there are a few, but, I mean, I think there are, I, I don't know, she just said that was one of their concerns. For bus travel, because they could do the bus if there was room for two, but if there's only room for one.
Is there bulk of wheelchairs? Or they're considered, somebody would be there before them?
I don't know, yeah, we, we can check.
Or they before somebody else, I mean, they were saying, it does, they didn't think it was reasonable to just have one spot. And I don't know what they need, or, you know, if that happens very often, or if it, uh, it was a concern.
Yeah, check. The only thing I maybe wanted to think about here, if we're an objective, is just something about. Biking too, I know we have the bike ped path as an action, um. But, and this is maybe more of an action than an objective, but the reason I think about this, and it's come up with some residents I've talked to, I think. People that go to the schools too, is we have wonderful bike lanes on Applegate. To the west of Fifteenth, and on Applegate to the east of, like, whatever, Twenty First or something. So we have them everywhere except right in front of the schools. And so there's just something, if there's a way we could connect, like, add bike lanes, and like, you know, in front of the schools, and I even remember that, you know, I would bike to school. And I even remember that, you know, I would bike to school and it's like. I'm biking along the bike lane and then as soon as I actually get to school, it's just kinda dodging in between cars and you know, there's all this kinda stuff, so.
That's a project in the CIP and it may even be for this year, I have to look, this year or next year. So adding a bike lane on uh Applegate Street.
Okay, okay.
We gotta flip the coin to see if we're in public north side of the high or. Neighbors are gonna get.
Well, and I've seen, I haven't really think about this, cause then I've even, I've made a point of driving there. And I, there's plenty of parking, like there's never both sides of the street are full cars.
Nobody wants to be the one to have to park.
I know, I know. Okay, cool, I I guess I didn't realize. Okay, okay, is it worth adding something about it or?
Um let me look, I mean, if we do, that'd be like an action item, so.
Right, okay, okay.
Under any one of these, so.
Let me just say, should we just add the word bike and in three point four point one?
Maybe in pedestrian.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And it should be on the south side, cause that's where the other two are. And I don't live on south side.
Both sides of the line, is that what you're saying?
Saying it would be odd to go up and then cross over and then cross over again to get the bike lane.
Yeah. The north side also has less houses, sort of, except for the school. That sounds like a public works.
The argument, Councilor Crocker, since you brought it up, is travelers that are going through town. That take the bike way down to Applegate, they stay on that north side of the road all the way down to the highway. And then they're taking a new. So they're on that north side of the road already and so go to the south would force them to, so. There's arguments for both sides, but.
Well, in front of my house, the it's on the south side.
South side, right.
Well, but it's split, right? There's one lane on each side.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Parked around the north, that's that's the issue, I guess. And that's a difficulty for.
So are you thinking it'd be like a, like a two-way bike lane side of the street instead of one on each side?
Yeah, I don't think we'd get away with the bike lane on both, there's not room for it on both sides, so we'd pick one and we'd stripe it and.
And do both, like both directions on one side, okay.
I wouldn't think there's a lot of time that you've got much traffic going opposite. School kids going one way and we're going way, yeah, yeah.
I lean towards the south side myself.
That that is, that is the side that all the schools are on.
Likely for the school kids or for the tourists that are cycling through town.
Okay, anyway, enough of that, anything else on um the multimodal transportation? Okay. Goal three point five, we are good stewards of the environment. I I do like it, I just, it feels a little like the wording feels different than the others, like something of like, oh, the weeds kinda. Right, yeah, like. Who's weed? Right, like Philomena is, you know, practices environmental stewardship, there's like, I don't know. There's just some way to make it a little more.
To be good stewards of the environment.
Right, something. The city, yeah, I don't know. I don't really care what it says, something, you get what I'm saying, I just got it to where it is, you talk.
Practice good environmental stewardship.
Philomena practices good environmental stewardship.
Everything else is basically with Philomena, so you start there.
Yeah.
Or the city. Practices are champions.
The word champions is I feel like it doesn't inherently mean you're doing anything about it.
You might just like start it. It's a song, please.
Okay, cause I feel like I like practicing, like I, you know, I don't wanna make a big deal out of it and like champion. But this is me, I don't, it doesn't make a difference.
I know, I practice. As a mayor, you get a word smith.
Practices good environmental stewardship.
And then, okay, so then are the objectives good with people, we have reduced excessive inflow. And infiltration in the sewer collection system, wastewater treatment facility. Don't talk about that at all.
That's good, so again, that was one that was in chapter three before, based on the, and so we've just moved it over, that's a. Ongoing, it's a, it's not necessarily one that's repetitive, cause that is gonna dictate specific projects and action items that we do, I think it's a great objective to have. And I would love today when we don't have to have that objective anymore, but the reality is that'll probably be a fairly long-term objective that we have.
Um and then expand capacity to spread effluent through land application.
Yeah, so we've got a specific project to be able to pump our effluent to the other side of Bell Fountain, to the. East side of Bell Fountain Road. Cost a little bit of money, that that there's more fields over there that the same farmer that leases the city's fields near the. The sewer lagoons, he leases those from us, he also leases across highway or across Bell Fountain. He'd love to be able to use our effluent over there on his plants, but we don't. So there's a plan, there's a cost, there's not money, it's not been a huge priority.
But assuming it would generate revenue, right?
No, not really.
The service for us.
It allows us to be able to draw the um ponds down a little bit sooner, not store them so much. And I think as our use increases as well, we'll want to draw them out a little more often, so it's it's a good long-term project to have in there. It's just not been a huge priority with the limited funds that we've had.
I can check dictionary dot com, but what does effluent mean?
Liquid waste or sewage, I looked at.
Yeah, we we basically spray sewage. That was a preferable word. I see why that word. I think by the time it gets sprayed on.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's very.
No, it's not, right.
Well, I mean, compared to like.
Very compared to how it goes in.
Straight from your toilet to the pipe on the field.
It's not allowed to be used on human crops that are eaten by humans, but it can be put on crops that are eaten by other animals. Other than human, so.
They're fine, they got like seven. Um the only thing with this is that I think we should put goal three point eight, say, objective in goal three point five. Reduces energy usage in city buildings and vehicles, that that feels like an objective. Where are you pointing to, sorry? Um on the next page, goal three point eight.
Reduce energy.
Um reduce energy usage in city buildings and vehicles, that feels like it should be an objective under goal three point five, we are good, or not we are. Philomena practices good.
I get that, I get that.
I mean, unless we were gonna limit it to just economic. Right, like if you were just gonna cut energy usage purely for economics. Then it wouldn't fit, but otherwise I think you got kinda right. Right, if we literally just meant like use less energy so that the light bill is low, I mean metaphorical light bill is lower. Like I guess it is still kind of environmental stewardship, the aim isn't.
You know what I'm saying, but I think if, I think that we think that we also wanna just do it for.
I think that's secondary to why it was done there. Yeah, yeah, it's right to have it combined, I think it was put on there for the environmental stewardship.
But if we were just like. Whole plan was like.
I I get what you're saying.
But but to the point that that it actually focuses it more on the environmental department and the. The cost savings are incidental, right? Welcome, but incidental to the main thrust of like, listen, we're gonna, we're actually looking at ourselves, how could we be more lead compliant or whatever that looks like?
Right, yeah. And then I guess along with that, it feels like a lot of goal three point seven. And may, I mean, maybe I'm thinking about it differently, but could even be consolidated into three point five. A lot of the promote healthy, clean neighborhood, I'm just thinking about things like the urban tree canopy, oh, not tree, not free. Urban tree canopy and then like water and waste conservation. Waste management, like those things feel like they could go under. I mean, I that, I don't, I'm just trying to consolidate a little bit. We have a shorter document, but.
I don't know if that makes it shorter, it just moves it.
One line.
I do think it's worth a discussion, I won't skip down it quite yet, but I.
Sure.
There's a lot of objectives there.
Right, right.
Fine, I think prioritizing those would be helpful tonight, it would be nice to get some direction from you, and I just. But everything that you don't talk about and you all have a lot of good ideas here, but we can't do all this, right, so. What are the priorities, I kinda put them in order of priority a little bit based on how the different groups have them ranked. But I think there's some prioritization needs to happen here, so that you know, what are the two or three things you want to work on this year? Those are the eight things. Tenure?
Yeah. Um I guess. Would it be okay to move specifically like the tree canopy and water. Ones to. Environmental stewardship and then we can talk about the other ones.
I think so.
Does that work for people?
I like that idea personally.
So move.
I agree.
And three point seven point two. To three point five, and I think we can get rid of. Three point seven point three and three point seven point four, those two are.
I don't think three point seven point seven fits into that, I think that's more of a safety issue.
Sure, let's, maybe let's get back to that and just, I mean, just let's, are we, are we good then with three point five environmental stewardship? With the objectives of excessive inflow and infiltration and objective of spreading. In populated areas, um and then the tree canopy and waste conservation, water and. That work?
Yeah, I think that works.
Okay. Um then let's go to three point six really quick and then we'll go back to three point seven. Um Philomena has beautiful, active and accessible parks.
I like that heading, sorry.
No, I, yeah.
Um I think if you were to cut beautiful parks eh, active parks eh, yeah. I like the accessible part, but I think that the heading on that one is is fully written, I think I'm gonna do heading on that one personally. Um I was looking at um. I was just looking as far as green spaces and active and passive rec- rec- act- active and passive recreation. Promoting active and passive recreation, I think there are better ways to put that goal than just parks. Uh I mean, than it's supported currently, Philomena has.
I was gonna say I like the title, but.
We have a ways to go on access.
I like calling it out, I think it's important. To be specific, but I mean, I, I mean, it could also accessibility could be its own objective.
Yes.
Yeah, honestly. I mean, some of this I had, I did have the thought and it's probably too, it's not like. Probably not pertinent with as far along this process as we are, but we could almost have like. Recore value statements that are like Philomena would move, you know, with stewardship. You know, inclusivity and. Accessibility and appropriate by fiscal management or like. Sometimes I think we're spelling it out and sometimes we're not, and we could almost just say like, these are the things that were always. What every, every goal we have has these. Areas of. Right, like. Yeah, well, yeah, exactly, but just like.
The mission and statement.
Yeah, we could have that in almost every one of these, we kinda have like a weird obscure goal. Or objective that has to do with either stewardship. Accessibility. Or inclusivity and then and then. Away with, hey, we're gonna, everything we do, we do this way and then these are the. I don't know, let's see that, I don't.
So, yeah, what about Philomena has beautiful parks that foster active and passive recreation? Or as, or some, I mean, I just, I think we need to have something with.
With recre- recreation?
You want them to be, that we're, we're asking them to spend time, you know, that it's, it provides a form of recreation for. Whether it's active or passive.
And you want that to be the goal, not.
But I don't know.
What do you feel about that?
I think parks are inherently. Recreation. Do they have another reason, another purpose, other than recreation?
Looking pretty. Uh but, I mean, I, I don't feel strongly, but I.
I don't either, I don't, I don't, I like the way that it's written pretty well, I don't dislike the. Councilor Nicholson suggested either, I don't, I feel pretty neutral.
Okay. Brent, you got any? Not exactly, I think beautiful captures so many things, I I may even say cool as beautiful parks. But it's not beautiful, if it's not accessible, it's not.
Make it simple.
But but I didn't have any bombs about how it reads now either.
Trails onto that, just beautiful parks and trails.
Yeah, there you go.
Great, look at that.
But for trail parks, access- accessible, right?
Well, that could be a goal. I also feel like accessible doesn't necessarily have to mean ADA compliant.
But try to get anywhere in a wheelchair, I mean, I.
Oh, yeah, I guess, I guess to me like accessible can mean beyond just people in wheelchairs, you know, like. Just can you get there?
Building a park can make a park accessible in a neighborhood where there wasn't a park.
Could also, you could build with the idea that it would be more user friendly, like maybe you can't rent a wheelchair, but.
We're like, you know, I feel like.
You know, I mean, it's like.
Like having the bathrooms open year round, feels like it helps make the park accessible, that doesn't necessarily help specifically people in wheelchairs, you know.
Or even crutches, but it's. I only know that because, yeah, I've been on a few. And for an action item, are we going to address, I know we have the skate park um funding and things, are we gonna address anything for the. East side of the city park?
I, I, yeah.
As an action item?
I guess.
I have um some projects, I think on the capital improvement plan suggested. I mean, part of the projects are that we do have a park center, a master plan that have projects identified in it. So that's part of what we're grappling with is. Get things without also looking at that to see what's there.
And that is where on, is this in goal, is this within this goal that?
Um it's, it's not, it's just, it's put, it's on the CIP project list, it's just um where the equipment was taken down. I think we requested budget money to put some additional exercise equipment in that side of the park.
But I think that is under objective three point six point one, right, following the Parks and Trails Master Plan.
The one action item to all carry over, they're not necessarily the current action items.
But they're there, okay, thank you.
Action items based on what's in the CIP and Public Works.
Thank you, and that's an example of a project that came up, it wasn't on the Parks and Trail Master Plan.
Right.
Because like it was still there, but the condition of it, we had to remove it and it, and the park advisory board. Really wanted to make sure that that stayed as a.
First came up during the ARPA funding discussion that came in and some of the surveys that people had requested that, it's something we could put in ARPA funds towards. And then it was like, oh, oh, we have been taking those out one by one as I've been rotted at the base. At the last go around, we just took everything out, cause it was like, we're just not keeping up with what's there.
Yeah, but since I mentioned it earlier, I think the other objective I might like to see, cause I know we talked about it briefly, is like. Um improving security or something at city parks and. If it's tied into that, which I thought it was, helping bathrooms be open more.
Like talking, we, and one of the groups talked about like cameras, better camera system.
Yeah, yeah, and I know that was what we talked about in Public Works Committee for why bathrooms at Mary River Park aren't open more. It's just because of like vandalism issues and employee, if we can put in security cameras or improve security, that helps. Facilities be open more, I mean, I, I feel like, I, I don't know about you all, I hear more complaints about the bathrooms being closed. Half the year than I do about like the actual park itself. But I just think if that, you know, like I, I feel like based on the complaints I hear, people would appreciate that more than they would appreciate. A new exercise thing, you know, like they appreciate being able to like.
Well, you're certainly far less likely to have a picnic or something.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, you gotta drive home or go to the gas station.
So I don't know if that should be its own objective, cause I got, I mean, it's not in the capital improvement plan right now. So I don't know if that should be its own objective, because I, I mean, it's not in the capital improvement plan right now.
Yeah, I think it's a good objective.
Okay, okay, I agree, can we put something about bathrooms in there though too, not just security? Because to me, the security is a means to an end of using the.
Spending a lot of time at the park, the one at the city park, the new, but it really get, I, I was over with the kids a couple days ago and. There's a lot of you, people even wipe up used bathroom and then drive away. It definitely gets a lot of use.
Yeah, 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 and I think especially if we're gonna be like installing new bathrooms at Skirvin Park, like. I feel like we should demonstrate to the community that we can also keep their existing bathrooms open. Okay.
Where are we on the skate park? I've heard about, I was supportive of it for a while and then it, I have not been hearing from more than three or four people. That that was something that they wanted and, and when the person said, you know, I'd rather my money not go to the skate park and. And some more picnic areas or something like that, that more people could use. So I didn't really have an answer for that.
Yeah, the, the park advisory board actually talked about the skate park at their last meeting. And there are several members still on the park advisory board that want to make sure that it's remaining a priority. It's not the entire park advisory board and the reason why is not because they don't want a skate park, it's again, because they're just. They're not hearing from the community and the groups that have tried to. Get people excited about it and vocal and getting the word out to the park advisory board or city staff, um, we just haven't heard from them. Um, and so it is still on the, you know, the capital improvement plan. The council has said it's a priority, I think there's, you know, it's a. Little bit of a sticky situation, I don't know what Chris has to say about it, but it, I mean, it's been identified in the council, maybe not the current. Makeup of the council, but the council fairly recently has said, yes, we, you know, we saw the survey, which. Some of the survey, the question of it is how many of the people were from Fulham that were saying that? Um, but it is tough because it's been a discussion for so long and. There are still a lot of people I think that are hopeful that it's going to be there, but I'm not sure where they are, I've tried to get them to. Participate and we haven't had a whole lot of participation.
When we came, can I just follow up on that? When we came to the council to talk about, um, requesting funding from the legislature. Or excuse me, when we talked about coming to the council about going to state parks and rec for. A grant to fund the improvements of the rodeo grounds for the restroom. That was a conversation we had at the time would be if we apply for this grant for the bathrooms and we get it. Will likely not be the recipients of another grant for several years out, maybe two to three to four years out. Which is really the only real source that we would go to for funding for the skate park and that was a. A consideration that the council made at that time when they decided to approve going for that funding for those restrooms, that seemed more timely. But the other improvements happening down there with the need with PYC, et cetera, et cetera, that they kind of. Knew that and making that decision, the direction we got, and we did get the grant, which is great, we got eight hundred thousand dollars to both put into the restrooms and help with some of the other. Improvements at the rodeo grounds, so again, that kind of means the result of that is we're not going to be eligible for another large. Five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollar grant for a facility like a skate park in Fulham for at least the next couple of years. Um, so we're encouraging the local community members to continue to garner support. To do little fundraisers, awareness campaigns, keep the work going. But we're just not seeing a lot of effort there like Chelsea said, so not that we would expect to see it, because it's not like it's groundbreaking next month and we need to get the money. But we were, I think, anticipating or expecting that we'd see a little bit more push from some grassroots efforts that we're just not really seeing.
I have a question.
Um, I just remember in one of the meetings always that they were gonna do private fundraising from private entities. Um, do they have a substantial, do we know that they have a substantial amount to begin a project like that to a percentage? We gathered ten percent, we've gathered twenty percent.
We kind of redirected them at this point because we knew we're not going to be applying for a grant, we. I think we've redirected them to start with getting support and getting awareness and getting people together that might want to do that. Because that's kind of the, the beginning of that is that you have a group of people who want to go out and make those efforts and. They haven't been successful yet in getting, um, people that are really. Time and energy, like a group of people, um, yeah.
I think it's a big enough expense, honestly, that it's, it's worth putting on the list of things to talk about that visioning. Exercise that we do, I mean, I know we're not talking about a multimillion dollar building, but I do think it's a big enough expense where. You know, hey, community, we've got recreation dollars or funding we can go out for, what are those things that you're looking for? A lot of it's captured in our Parks and Rec Master Plan, um, but I think it's silly to think that that. Survey wasn't highly influenced by skateboard enthusiasts throughout the entire state and region. Who thought, you know, saw the benefits of having a skate park in Fulham and all took the survey and stated. That skate park was their greatest highest priority, um, a lot more people answered that than what we've seen show up at community meetings where we've been talking about the skate park. And you get, you know, one or two people from the communities, a couple of people that own a skate shop in Corvallis. We're just not, we're not seeing on the ground, we're not seeing the type of enthusiasm for skate park as what we saw the results of that survey. Which again, we anticipate or we fully recognize where a lot of skateboard enthusiasts from the region, maybe not from Fulham.
On there as well, has that had a lot of conversation in the past?
It's, it's come up, I wouldn't say that it's a lot, we have seen it, um, surveys written in, even I think the last survey we did, there were some write-ins. About a dog park, so it is something that we hear fairly often, but we're not hearing it from a lot of people. Um, and again, what, what, what I have said when things come up at the park advisory board meetings is. We have a Parks and Trail Master Plan that gets revisited every so often. To me, that's the type of project that you would look at when you are, you know, working on that again, because it's not something. That, oh, we have this prime place and we need to make a decision if we're going to put that there right now, it's something that's kind of long term planning. Um, so that's the message I have given the park advisory board is, you know, let's keep that. In your head for those members who it is a focus for and then let's talk about it when we do the master.
Make the project priority list in the current Parks and Trails Master Plan, it's not on the list of projects.
I have actually heard from a lot of people that want one and, um. Music in the park, Jane stood there and had people write and, and Dog Park was mentioned.
It does come up, yeah.
Bigger than maybe people are.
It got heavily overshadowed by skateboard enthusiasts.
My thing on the skate park, I think it'd be great, I think we should, like, obviously the skate park we have is bad. Um, I just think the thing that I hope the community understands about it too is that like. There are a lot of. As we can do that don't cost seven hundred thousand dollars, but like I'm not opposed to building a new skate park. If we have seven hundred thousand dollars to do it, but like putting up a dog park is like, let's put up a fence and maybe some little like. Fallen over logs and some wood chips and call it a day, I mean, I'm being a little reductive, but like not too reductive, you know, that's not seven hundred thousand dollars. Or like, let's put in some new benches that cost like what, ten thousand dollars, you know, like it's not, it's not a. So I think that, that's where I'm at on the skate park, I love it, I think we need it, I think it's a good idea. But seven hundred thousand dollars of like general fund is a lot of money.
I have just a quick clarifying question and then I think we should keep working, but, uh. Is that the rough number that we need to get, it's around seven?
Yeah, and which, which was several years ago.
And we were, so even if we were like, yay, we just went to legislature and we got five hundred thousand. Can you guys come up with your part and that, but it's like. It'd be like three hundred thousand dollars or something that they're like. That's a heck of a fundraising effort, right, like.
We'd be looking at grants or we could look at, um, like park STCs as well, we give out five thousand dollars per household that comes in. We've just not seen a lot of new household, new development coming into Fulham for several years either, so. You know, it was the, the, um, you know, two hundred thousand dollars that we put towards the tennis courts. That was built on the backs of the Boulevard Apartments and the, um, Oak Springs Apartments coming in. Paying five thousand dollars per unit, I mean, that's what gave us the money to be able to build. Or give the money to the schools to be able to help build those, so, you know, it's one of those, if, if we had a couple really large developments come in, then you could say. Hey, we've got this STCs, let's look at the project list and see what would be a good candidate. But really, you're, I mean, at the end of the day, we're looking at a state park start grant is probably what you're looking at and it's really just when are we gonna be eligible for that again? Likely to get it, we're eligible every year and some cities do apply every year, but you're only gonna get awarded every so often. So we haven't even finished building the restrooms yet, right, so.
And we probably wouldn't, and that wouldn't cover the whole thing probably anyway?
It would cover some, they, they'd like to see the cities got some skin in the game, so we would identify some park STCs to go towards it or some.
Have to cover forty percent.
Our fund dollars.
Somehow we have to cover forty percent of it in other ways other than that.
There's not a ton of feasibility.
I think that's where it's at right now is just, and that's what I've told the park board is just. There are a lot of park projects and wants and wishes and I think ultimately that. When you get to a point where you think it might be more feasible, getting some input again at that time. It's a lot of new people seeing what, you know, we, we had feasibility study, we did heavy like. Farmer's market, we had people out trying to get the word out, the schools, we had, we're getting the word out everywhere and we had. I think there are only eleven people in the room, most of them were park board, there were a couple skateboarders and they were all from, um, Corvallis. And one of them owned a skate park or skateboard, uh, shop.
And I don't even hate the idea that. Nearby skateboarders come to hang out in Fulham, right, but like. That would also, we have a responsibility to our citizens, but like.
Prioritizing, I think.
A three hundred thousand dollar investment in having people come to skate from.
Well, and the money that you are asking for a grant could be toward another project, so it really is the full amount, you know, potentially.
I have a thing to say about the parks, um, I'm working with someone on senior, um, improvements for our community. And a park with maybe a wheelchair to a couple of benches and a, like a cement game table was something we were thinking about. I don't think it would cost tons of money and yet it would enhance the parks and. Reach out to a, um, population that. The parks don't necessarily reach out to at this point. That's a possibility to take it to the park board and.
I think, yeah, I don't know if that's a strategic plan level thing, but, um.
I get to get Parks Board.
Sorry, I've been talking a lot, is there anyone else? Okay, um, just, and I, I wish I had this more baked in my head before I spoke. But, um, just sort of going along with the like, being proactive, planning ahead thing. And this may be more part of like the community visioning thing, it may not, just something that bugs me sometimes with how we. Do parks right now, is like if a new development goes in, they have to build a little park at the development. And so then it leads to a bunch of little parks scattered around town, which is great, those, it's great, we have little parks for those. Individual developments, but like what, like what? Like, uh, that's just, like, and that's something I don't really feel like is super well defined in the Parks and Trails Master Plan, there's like sort of vague. Mention of like, oh, ball fields or something, I think, but, um. I just think I've thought about that a lot, especially as we talk more seriously about the city growing to the north. Um, like if we are going to have a lot of new housing to the north, both Mary River Park and City Park are to the south. And most of our stuff is to the south, um, and so I would want us, that's just me, and I, again, I don't know exactly the right way to word that in here, but like. Think ahead and like reserve a good chunk of land as like green space on the north side of town instead of just letting it be. Five little pocket neighborhood parks that go in as developments come in. Um, just because I think like those types of. Spaces are like everyone's favorite thing about Fulham and I'd want us to. Really put some like attention into that before it's too late, you know, before we approve the development application for some. Big new subdivision, that kind of thing, um, and I know that's land that maybe could have some housing on it, but I think on the other hand, we want people to have good. Quality of living and, and like access to the outdoors and, I mean, I was looking at the map on the wall, right, like if I lived. Way up at like the top of the urban growth boundary, that's pretty far away from Mary River Park, um. And anyway, yeah, so.
Stand up for the little parks because parents with little children.
Yes.
Love to have a park very close by that they can go on grandparents do as well and, um, I bet they use more than you realize maybe. In that during the day.
Yeah, and I should, but I'm not saying we shouldn't have little parks in, in neighborhoods, I just think we shouldn't only have little parks in neighborhoods and if you look. On the north side of the highway right now, that's kind of all we have is little parks in neighborhoods, which are wonderful, I mean, I go to those, I live north of Main Street, but just like. You know, that, that, that plays a different role than like, I wanna take my dog for a walk or I want to go sit in nature and be at peace. Or I wanna go play frisbee or I want, you know, like, you can't do that at Triangle Park.
Right, another picnic.
So, I'm not, I'm not advocating against any type of park, I just feel like we, we don't, we. Parks and we're gonna have another one at Mill Pond and we're gonna, you know, like those, we have no problem getting those. Um, I just, I don't see a lot, I don't see any real plan for like. That. And I. Yeah, like a, like a community wide, like, yeah, and I mean, I, I don't think we've had a need and I saw, I, I don't, I don't think we have a need right now for that. But if we're thinking about twenty five years from now, I think we will. Large chunk of land, we can't wait, you know, until twenty five years, like, so which. Piece of large undeveloped land in the middle of the city should we pick and it's like, well, they're all gone.
I, yeah, I, I think we're pretty well positioned, I can go through the park master plan, get a little bit closer, but there is an identified. Region, north end of town that is identified as a new regional park. Um, and, uh, you know, the park master plan identifies those sections between a, a neighborhood park and a park, a. A, a larger, you know, neighborhood park and then a regional park and. Mary's River and City Park are the regional parks, we provide parking spaces, you know, the expectation, there's restrooms there, pavilions. Um, and we still have two of those now and they do serve the current population well, um. But no, there is area for the north, we did update our park methodology several years ago. Um, to allow the city to purchase space rather than.
Okay.
Be dependent upon the developer to donate land, we don't do that anymore. Um, we do now negotiate with that property owner, that developer to say. The master plan calls for a regional park in this area, we would like to purchase that and we would do that either through SDC credits where. We wouldn't charge them for each new house that came in, or we could use already collected STCs from other developments to actually make those purchases, so. We're set up better than we used to be, we used to be very dependent, where we'd get like, you know, every ten houses, we would get a quarter acre of land that we. Require them to give to us, that just didn't work out when you were developing right next to an existing big park, right, and so those smaller developments got away with not paying anything. And a very little SDC, we've changed that to now where everybody pays a little bit higher SDC and we put the parks where the plan says we're supposed to put the parks. So that is a slightly new change and we really haven't had new developments come on board since then, except that. The closest we came was the one next to the middle school and on that one, we actually got a. Sixty or ninety thousand dollar contribution towards the restroom upgrade, so that was the new restrooms in City Park. Came in lieu of a new little park down in that new subdivision that I happen to live in down there, because we didn't need a park right next to the middle school and. City Park and all that, but we didn't want them getting off the hook, not having to pay for park improvements either. So that was kind of the, the kind of most recent one, then that's how we dealt with it, was was a payment in lieu of a park. But the new code is pretty clear that we're going to, you know, require developers to set aside land where the park master plan says. A new park is needed, the north side of town, like North Twelfth Street, specifically, when that. Property develops, when we sit down and have the pre-application meeting, one of the first things we'll say is. The park master plan calls for a regional park on this north end of ten with ball fields, parking, et cetera, let's look at what kind of acreage we're. Let's look at what kind of acreage we're talking about, and let's put that on the table right away so you can know what kind of money we're talking about, so that will be a conversation to the north. Based on the current help master plan, so.
I like that, I agree with that.
Pretty good shape now, um, but it is different than what we've been in the past, that's a change, we just haven't exercised it yet, cause we've not had those new developments coming in. Mill Pond is a last development to get approved, it was required to provide park space, and that's, I think, just, just barely under two acres worth of a park. And that's gonna be a substantial park um for that new neighborhood, so.
That's pretty big.
So we took out objective three, seven, one, three, seven, two, so we're looking at three, seven, three. And this is under the goal for promoting healthy and clean neighborhoods.
You moved that to three point five?
That got moved to three point five?
Right, you went through that whole section, I mean.
All this left and three point seven is three point seven five, three point seven six and three point seven seven.
So three, seven, four went to three point five as well?
Uh, yeah, I guess I just lumped that in as, um, like, waste conservation, like sort of combining.
Three sub five, this is a priority, well, I'm good to get this council's feel on that. Um, is the council familiar enough with the Benton View Drive Sewer Project, can I give a three minute? Maybe two minute overview? Um, Benton View Drive, so South End Town is a loop, it's on a hillside. Um, it's currently serviced by private um septic systems, each home has its own private septic system and drain filled each field. Um. As there's been a little bit, it came up, oh, several years ago, there is a empty lot that somebody wanted to put a house on. And so the concern was, do we make them connect into city sewer, which was three houses away, or? Do they submit an application and try to get a private septic, even though they're inside city limits, so they tried for the private septic, and the county said, no, you have. City sewer accessible to you, you just need to connect to it, again, it was not three, it was two houses away, so they had to build a sewer line across. Their two neighbors' properties who were on private septic to their property in order to make that feasible, which they did. But now their two neighbors also have sewer available to them, the city's municipal code says if you're within seventy feet of city sewer. You are required to hook into that sewer line and abandon your private septic. Costs money, the city doesn't wanna make people pay money unless they have to pay money, the septics haven't failed. So the city took a hard look at that time and, and all of the neighbors in that area essentially. Once the first neighbor that's within seventy feet connects, well, now the next neighbor over is now within seventy feet, so then they have to connect, and now the next neighbor over is within seventy feet. In fact, and to have a, you know, every individual property owner do that one at a time, not only would take a long time, but it would also be very cost ineffective, right? For the cost of having it done, so the thought was to do some type of a sewer local improvement district where all of the neighbors would be required. To get assessed, the city would do a project and have that sewer line installed for all the properties, they'd all be required to hook up, and then they would all be given an assessment. A lien against the property for the cost of that, they could start making payments on that immediately, over time, when their property sold. Whatever, but eventually that lien would need to get paid off to the city. The city council has to look at it, we had the engineer take a look at it, I'm gonna use rough numbers, so I apologize, I haven't looked this a while. He was like three point five million dollars or something like that to install it, because it's not just a sewer line for those homes. It's a sewer line to capture ones on bottom, it's one along the middle to capture the homes above that, and it's a third sewer line at the top to capture the homes at the top of the hill. And so it's three separate sewer lines, whereas normally you'd run a sewer line and have houses on both sides of the street to feed it. This is not that case, you have a sewer line on the hill, and so you've got three sewer lines to feed three layers of houses instead of two. So it's ridiculously expensive, the city council at the time opted to not form the local improvement district, we heard from a few neighbors. Said, over my dead body, um, be adamant, and so the city council, again, at the time backed off, said it's not a project we're gonna do. Eventually, those septics might fail, and maybe at that point the neighborhood comes to us and says, our septics are failing. We need to connect into city sewer, and maybe we do just do it one at a time as the septics fail, or. We can enforce our current code, which says if you're within seventy feet, you are required to hook into city sewer. We're not enforcing that now based on guidance from the city council to me years ago. We've put it back in the strategic plan years ago, it's kind of hovered towards the bottom as a priority that we just wanna keep kicking down the road. If it's not a priority for this council, then we just take it off, and we deal with Benton View Sewer. As it happens, it's, it's not an unsafe situation today, but if one of those septics fails and stuff starts rolling down the hill into the neighbor's property. At that point, they're gonna look to the city and say, why didn't you enforce your code? Why didn't you require our neighbor to uphill of us to hook into city sewer when it was available, and we'll say. We talked about it, the neighborhood totally knows, the city council directed us not to.
And do we have legal liability in cases like that, I'm, I'm sorry, but that's a question.
Not an attorney, maybe, um. But, I mean, that, that would be the argument for doing it, right, to form the LID is to say. We have some potential liability here, we don't want that liability, we're going to force the neighbors to go to this expense to get this done. So we remove some of our liability, when we had that discussion with the city attorney and the city council. Last time we looked at this, the city council felt like it wasn't, you know, the liability was small enough and the cost was big enough that they were willing to just delay it. But they felt if they were still talking about it, then maybe that would hedge the liability a little bit, but. Been less expensive to do six years ago than what it would be to do today, it's no less expensive, and now you've got new property owners, those properties turn over, not. Overly regularly, but you definitely have some new owners in there, and so, that's the story.
Do you, um, have they been there forty years or fifty years, do you know how long they've been there and what the average lifespan of a septic system is?
Yeah, many of those homes have been there for fifty plus years.
It's fifty plus years, probably, so I mean, that, I think that makes it more important, um, and maybe we give them. I don't know, five years or, you know, a longer extended time to get this project done, but that it's gotta be done, cause we don't wanna.
That's the beauty of the, the local improvement district though, because you build those sort of things in and make it. If they have choices, they could either pay for it now, as Chris said, or overtime, or. Whenever the property changes hands, or some, but somewhere along the line, the city will get the money back, but still, you're gonna have to fund it upfront. Because you're not gonna get all that money out, you know.
Borrow money and do the project, and then we would repay. We would chart out an interest on that lien as well, so not just free money, we would charge our going rate right now in local improvement districts. That we've done in the past is nine percent, so we would charge whatever the cost was, thirty thousand dollars. Plus nine percent every year that it wasn't paid, and again, there's nothing that would, we wouldn't foreclose on a property on a lien like that. We would just let it sit until the property's sold, and then we would look to recover at that time, um.
Do you have a rough number per household?
I do, but I don't remember it, I mean, we could, if, again, if it's a priority, we can dig that stuff back up and start looking at it again, it's just, it's not been a priority to the council in the past.
I feel like it's an unfortunate priority, like part of me wants to say not important, and I definitely don't wanna. Pay for things that they didn't plan or expect, but we do sort of have a, uh. Responsibility to everybody there, it's like you said, like if you're the downhill guy, it could be a real problem. And if we didn't do our part, like, it doesn't feel good to me, even though I don't wanna make somebody pay ten grand or whatever, however many thousands.
It wasn't the thirty, forty, yeah, so it wasn't like five or six thousand dollars, like a sidewalk.
But they have to redo their septic system to fix it, if they could.
And they can't.
Cause that's the other thing, right?
The county won't allow them to do.
Exactly, that's the whole thing, so you're, you're basically.
It's helping them out in the long run, they don't, won't see it that way.
So we're setting them up to fail, I just don't wanna be in that position, I really don't.
The resale value of the house would go up if they didn't have it hanging over them.
Oh, and it's sort of an inequitable enforcement right now too, which doesn't feel very good, right, like if you're new, then you'd have to. Sit, you know, or the, yeah, the guy when he's like, oh, I need to get my septic redone, and it's like, nope.
Yeah, I mean, the, just speaking to it, I mean, what you'll hear is people that'll come in and they'll say. We just bought this home last year, we had no idea that we were gonna have this thirty thousand dollar, forty thousand dollar expense. Added to us, like, we paid top dollar for this house, we're stretched, like, we can't afford another dime on this thing, how are we supposed to pay this? And then you'll have the others that are like, we've been here for thirty years, we've never had a problem with our septic, we think it'll last another thirty years, we're on a limited income. We, we have no extra money to pay for this, so this money's gonna sit there, and then what, our, our kids are gonna have to pay it when we're dead and gone, and. You know, it's, it's, we have no extra money, we're on a fixed income, so it's gonna be tough, you know, I mean, nobody's living. Rich these days, it's, it's tough.
Yeah, nobody's got an extra thirty K, that's right.
So it's a lot of money.
The theory takes on essentially, the cost, the brunt of the costs upfront, and then somewhere along the line. When that property turns over, we'll get it, but it, it may be ten, twenty years before you see the money, but in the meantime, we're paying the loan. You know, um, the, the value of the loan plus interest and things like that, but I, it's not gonna get any better.
The city has the.
It's gonna get worse, but the costs are gonna keep going up, and you just like, pay me now or pay me later. Unfortunately.
As an added insult, there's a portion of the road that doesn't have sidewalks, it's not built to city standard yet, so it was. You know, we're gonna do the sewer lines, and then we're gonna leave it without sidewalks, or we're gonna leave it, you know, not to city standards, or are we gonna tack that on as long as we're up there doing it? Add that cost on there as well, so it sounds like there's at least enough interest in looking at it further that we can leave it on here and see where we prioritize it, and. You know, maybe staff gives it a refresh and we can bring it to you at a future meeting based on action items and other things, but.
I think it's important to keep talking about it at a minimum of best.
Do we do like a community?
Well, here, though, right?
No, like up there.
Where?
I know some people up there, like, I just, I just feel like that's, I just feel like we won't be able to be involved, like, come to your neighbor's house and. Talk to the mayor and the city manager about this, it's supposed to like, drive to city hall in the middle of the night and sit under the fluorescent lights, you know?
Tell you what we're gonna do as your landlord.
Forty-five thousand dollars, whether you want it or not.
Yeah, I think to find a champion, you know, community champion, somebody that lives in the neighborhood that can get behind the project and.
Or even get behind having them.
Yeah, yeah, I say, look, folks, this is.
It's like, I guess I wanna hear what their thoughts are, you know, like, just lay out like, your, every septic system up here will fail at some point. Here's, like, ju- like, you know, just sort of lay out the problem, and then be like, how would you all approach this kind of thing, and then. I just, I wanna hit it early, rather than, you know, it's like, the problem people always have with city government is like. They, they feel like they find out about it the day before we vote on it, and it's already a done deal and everything, so like. We try to hit it early.
Understood.
Yeah, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Logically, before we even like draft a LID proposal or anything, just sort of a like.
Why they feel detached from the process.
Right, right.
I think having them feel informed and, and included in.
Right.
Process of consideration.
Right.
I think that's empowering.
Right, I also just feel like, and this is, I don't, I could go on a soapbox about this, so cut me off at some point here if I am, but. Um, like, also just helping people see the city as them, like, there's not the residents and of the city.
Right.
You know, like, everything in this, that the city owns is owned by the residents, and in the same way that you have to keep up your house. You also have to keep up your city, and trying to kind of, you know, help that conversation a little bit of like, this isn't like the big bad government coming in and like. Being like, give us money, it's like, these, you own the sewer system here, here's the problem with the sewer system here, as the owner of this sewer system. What are you gonna do, right, I mean, all, all six thousand people in this town are the owner of our sewer system, so like, how, how, you know, just trying to get people to have a little more. Mental ownership of the problem, yeah.
Um, do you think they know that they can't put in a new system if it fails? I think that knowledge would help them to see the problem, and then. So that they wanna work with it, or you know, I, I can't imagine what other idea they could come up with that would fix that. Than this. Doing it one at a time.
You're kicking the can down the road and let it be somebody else's problem.
But now, look, let's talk, let's, if one of this, um, septic system fail. How long until they can get hooked up, I mean, wouldn't it be failing for several months at the very least?
That's why we need to get the bathrooms open in the parks.
Yes, well. Anyway, I just think, you know, once you realize that, you know, it's not gonna be a quick fix, and it's gonna be more expensive if you do it by yourself. Than if you do it with a whole group, that, I, I, yeah, I would, but I, I would understand why we would need to. So I need to talk about this more.
Okay.
Yes, and on.
Leave the, the, the exploration. Okay, great, well, that was one objective. See what you did? Yeah, okay, three point, seven point six, work with the F Street, which is North Twelfth Street. Road District on their LID, and that you have to have at least fifty percent majority in favor.
There's no requirement, the city have fifty percent majority, that's a, that was at a minimum, and. Actually, I think I authored that, cause I said to the road district at the time, it's like, if you can't show us that at least half of your. Members up here want it, then I'm not comfortable going to the city council and asking them to form a local improvement district to do it, if, if they're gonna be bombarded by. More than half of the neighborhood showing up saying, we absolutely don't want it, the city council, as the mayor just said, we're you, like, we're, the city is you, we're here to support you. If this is something a neighbor doesn't want, even if it's not even a majority, the simple majority of the neighborhood wants, why would the city do it, right? But the reality is, the city isn't just North Twelfth Street, right, and so, there's public safety considerations, there's. Sidewalk issues, there's open trenches issues, there's growing populations, there's future growing populations. Which, and there, there are other things that I think the city council would be concerned about that, um, a neighbor on that street. May not be as concerned about, right, and so, the fifty percent was put out there as kind of a minimum bar. And like, hey, if you can show the city council, show me and the council that you've got more than half of your membership wanting this. Then we'll have the conversation, see if a local improvement district is a good tool to use to make that happen. You're still gonna have the other half the people that don't want it, that are gonna come kicking and screaming and not wanna have anything to do with it, but the local improvement district allows for the city council to decide. We're gonna make these city improvements to the street, and we're going to assess properties, but we're gonna need to do their fair share. Or not, the city council can also say, if it's a big enough priority, we're gonna find other funding sources and put that money towards Improvement Twelfth Street. Cause it's better for the city, and we don't necessarily want to be all on the backs of just the people that live there, it's, we want to improve for everybody. Everybody will get the benefit, and so we're gonna have everybody help pay for that in some way, so. You know, just the fact that you're mentioning local improvement district doesn't necessarily mean a hundred percent has to be paid for those neighbors, the city council can determine how much money. The neighbors pay versus how much everybody in the city helps pay, but. So as a minimum, I just wanna touch the fifty percent, fifty percent got added by the council a few years ago, cause that was standard, the city council at the time felt was kind of a minimum bar as well. But I just wanna make sure it's not a city code requirement that is fifty percent area.
Gotcha, I was just curious with that one, unlike the Benton View Drive one, since it's already a special district. Could we hypothetically put something on the ballot, like to actually check what percentage of residents support it? Or, and I know that would be slightly different than property owners, but.
Yeah, I can work with the road district, you know, like, put something on the ballot, I mean, there are. I mean, they would have to do it.
Right, right, okay, I just like, since we, because like, Benton View Drive, we can't do like a specific election for a neighborhood. But since they are a special district already, I just feel like that might be a way to kind of. Right, like instead of, you know, us doing another online poll, like. Right, like instead of, you know, us doing another online poll, like just put it on the ballot as an election.
It seems slightly more effective than.
I was just like, then no one can argue that like it wasn't, you know, representative of the community or whatever, it's like, well, it was an election, so.
Yeah, my my, I'll just be very blunt, my biggest concern about North Twelfth Street has has been for years, has been that. We're going to reach a point where a majority of the council sees it as a high priority. When a majority of the neighborhood does not see it as a priority. And maybe that's this council, maybe it's not this council, but that's my concern, right, is that at some point. The city is growing, we're evolving, we're growing parks, we're putting all these requirements for all these new developments to come in. We're still seeing new development on Wolf Street, but yet the road itself doesn't wanna improve because you can't get existing properties, wanting to pay more to put in sidewalks and.
We call it the F Street Historic District.
It's a rebrand, yes, it is all branding.
Sorry, did you have something called Parkers? Yeah, is it, yeah, they could have like a dirt road down there.
Have an annual, I mean, like a year together, the Dirt Road, go down.
Sorry, okay, I'm getting us off track, it's good.
I'd recommend with the objective, I think we we simplify this a little bit, maybe not quite so specific. Maybe we don't talk about local improvement district and we just talk about, you know. Safety related improvements and street improvements to North F Street.
Yeah.
And I'd like to collaborate with the F Street leadership to, you know, try to. Get a sense of the prioritization for that neighborhood, but I don't necessarily wanna tie the city council to ever have to be like. We're only gonna move forward if the majority of the neighborhood wants it. Being a little direct on that, because there are neighbor, there are property owners on the north end of Twelfth Street that would like to annex into the city and develop. Um, try not to be overly clear there, but I've referenced them earlier tonight already. That there's reasons the property owners aren't annexing into the city, mostly related to the sewer line. When the sewer line problem gets fixed. Those properties are going to want to come into the city and it's going to impact Wolf Street.
It is.
Directly.
Exactly.
And how many more vehicles, we heard the concerns about annexing a property, a very small property on Ninth Street because of road conditions. We will hear the exact same, if not more, cause there's a lot more people impacted on twelve. We will hear those arguments when North of Twelfth Street wants to develop and. It's going to be very difficult for the city council to argue that we shouldn't have improvements to North Twelfth Street as. North of Twelfth Street develops in the future. Um, that developer will pay for a portion of that, but it's not proportional to require that development to pay for all of the improvements along all of Twelfth Street and the side streets. It's going to trigger the discussion and so I I don't want the council to feel like they're on a spot and say, well, we can't do anything because we don't have fifty percent of the vote. You may never get fifty percent of the vote of the district and the council may still feel like because of future developments, it needs to happen and. So I I'm I'm just recommending we simplify this language, we talk about working with the leadership of the road district or just working with the road district themselves. And try to start planning for those future improvements, starting the conversation, I think it'd be helpful.
Right, can we go on to three point seven point seven?
Sure.
And, did you have something on it?
Um, because I drive Ninth Street a lot, I have a. An interest and I think it definitely needs to be improved, safety line, absolutely.
One thing that feels like it goes hand in hand with that to me is addressing some of the annexation islands too. Just cause I know like sort of the top of Ninth Street, there's like a big lot that's not the city and so that, like we. You know, like we can't even force those people to put in sidewalks, cause.
Yeah, I don't know where that, I mean, I've got that kinda slated on our calendar. That just for best practices, every few years, it's a good practice to. That have been created that, you know, as annexations come in over time, you get these little pockets that are still Benton County, but they're completely surrounded by the city. So our municipal code allows the city council to notify them, hey, you're going to be annexed. And then they get annexed and. That's it, if it's residential use, it's up to three years later, it's commercial use, um, then it's immediately. So, you know, you annex them in today's, then three years later, that's when it actually comes in, so they don't see the increase in property taxes. And those things for three years, um.
And if I can.
It does have to go out for a vote, um, but the so the city council, timing wise, the city council. Look at those, determine which, if not all of them, which ones specifically they'd like to annex.
Just recently, like a little property on Pioneer and. Out that way that.
Last time the city did it was about eight years ago. Ten years ago. Yeah, so this will be ten years later to do it again. But that's one, so so we'll bring that back, I don't know where it fits in the strategic plan as far as good, it's kind of a good governance best practices thing. Um, I don't know if it directly relates to Ninth Street in itself, or it's just more kind of an outside project that we'll be bringing to you, but. Um, my point on the timing is it has to go out for a vote of the people still. Which means we've gotta wait for the election, which means it doesn't make any sense to do it back last November, we're gonna do it in March.
Any just the context too about why those annexation islands matter? Like if you are living on a lot that is not annexed into the city, but is completely surrounded by the city. That means you're driving on city roads, you're going to city parks, when you call the police, the city police show up. And you're not paying any city taxes to support those services, the exact same taxes that all of your neighbors are paying, so it's more of like a fairness issue of just. Like, yeah, if you live out in Blodgett, you shouldn't have to pay full on taxes, cause you're not really using full on services, but if you live in Philomen. You know, then that that's where it comes up, I think, for me, is like, I, I'm not, you know, it's not like we're trying to. Again, be like big government, come in and charge people taxes, but it's like, if you're already using all of our services. But not paying the same fair share that all your neighbors are paying, that's not really.
City's not the only one, fire district is the same way.
Yeah.
That they have those same properties that aren't in the fire district.
Really?
They don't pay taxes for fire protection.
Right, but clearly if. You know, that it's not like, it's not like you call nine one one and then they look up your address and like, oh, nope, sorry, can't help you, you're not annexed into the city.
But in the same instance, those individuals aren't used to paying for those those.
Right, absolutely.
It is, well, suddenly I'm gonna be.
Right, and I'm not trying to dismiss that, but I just feel like.
Yes, it's fair.
Most of these properties that we'll talk about, when we do talk about, well, look, most of these have been islands for a long. They've been kind of free riding for a long. It's a little bit hard to justify, you know, well, you're gonna make my taxes go up, it's like. Let's calculate how much you haven't paid in taxes.
And I want to, just in case anyone's watching this, we're not accusing them of doing anything wrong. But it's, it's just the way that this this city grew around them, but. Um, the the honorable city recorder did mention to me that we're coming up on two hours, would it be okay if we? Yeah, would it be okay if we just finish up, um, the, is there, I guess, is there anything else on three point seven? And then we can take a quick break before we move into safe community? So, okay, um, then let's recess, how long do people want? Five minutes, ten minutes?
Five.
Five minutes, okay, we will recess and reconvene at eight oh one P M. Welcome back, we are bringing the meeting back to order at eight oh two P M, one minute overtime. And we are on theme four, safe community, which is. Praise be, our final theme. So, um, I guess let's dive right in, we have the first one. Goal four point one, follow a multi-year evidence-based traffic safety plan with an objective of ensure.
Chief Gersky was in on that and he was talking about that they actually have the traffic. Uh, signs that can, they can do the evidence to show, first, they wouldn't have any signs, any uh, lights showing how fast they're going. And check the traffic, how fast they're going, and then they would turn it on to warn people how fast they were going and. Determine the difference in how much the sun would make and.
That's true.
That's what.
Something like that. Yeah, and I know councillor Andrade had thoughts on this, but I don't, she's not here, so I don't know exactly what her thoughts were. Um, besides that she likes following evidence, I think, was her main takeaway, um.
Could we have a conversation, could Chief Gersky be a part of creating an objective regard regarding that? Traffic big safety plan as far as a.
Like I almost.
What's happening?
Almost what?
Well, I was gonna say, I I was gonna at first be like, oh, that feels like something we should refer to the police committee. But I feel like my whole thing is not just having a police committee, but also public works, like. You know, we're not gonna enforce our way out of. Traffic, probably like this whole, like the Streetscapes project or like, you know, the South City, like there's infrastructure things. And there's like public works things that can help with traffic safety too, beyond just writing tickets and.
I'll, so I'll admit, this goes a little confusing for me because I feel like it touches on a lot of other aspects that we're doing that are safety related. And that's almost kinda like. Unrealistically tries to simplify it into like one goal. Adding bike and pedestrian paths, for example, is a safety thing, and we've talked about safety in the parks already and we've talked about. Uh, some of the things that we're doing with our. It's just talk about, but the improvements that we made to the bus shelters and things are safety related and making sure that those are safe areas for people to be. And and, you know, we have a neighborhood traffic safety. Program that we adopted last year, that we have a specific policy on how we react when we get a complaint from a neighbor that. You went too fast in my street. There's a pro- a process now that it follows and we go through to make sure that that concern is addressed and handled and. Doesn't mean that we install a stop sign, but it does mean that we do a review, we put up the radar signs where if it's a speed concern issue. You know, there's steps that we go through and it gets looked at by the police committee and. Or and or public works committee, so we have a project or a process for responding to concerns raised. But I'm, I I guess I'm not really sure when we say a traffic safety plan. I mean, a lot of it is enforcement or responses to concerns that are raised, so I'm not sure what else we would be looking at.
Don't we already, sorry, don't, cause there's so many, I'm a part of so many different committees now. Thanks very much. I'm only finding out how broad these committees are, there's so many with loop and this and this and this, and by the way, if you're on this, then you're also on this. But anyway, we're we're, all of that's kind of happening at the, not only the local, but the regional and the countywide and. I mean, all of that's already sort of bepped out from terms of traffic safety plans, transportation in general, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know what I mean, like, there's already, as Chris sort of indicated, there's a lot of processes and. Things in place, so.
Right.
Traffic safety plan itself is geared on looking at congestion and.
Right.
Speeds and, you know, alternatives and alternative routes and.
Yeah.
If it's not directly dealing with safety, it's gonna help with safety by reducing that congestion or reducing those speeds or right. If it's not directly dealing with safety, it's gonna help with safety by reducing that congestion or reducing those speeds or right sizing streets and. The T S P is two hundred something pages long and it dealt a lot with safety of our transportation, so I. Again, I don't want to oversimplify, but I don't want to be repetitive either, and I don't want to dismiss evidence-based traffic safety plan, but I. Greatest evidence-based traffic safety plan is the transportation system plan, that we paid a lot of money for consultants, engineer consultants.
They do all that.
Traffic engineers coming in to do a bunch of work and that's what we are implementing and prioritizing and, and all of that, so I. I mean, if it's projects outside of the T S P. Then, then I would raise my eyebrow to any of those, just say, well, why isn't it in the T S P, why wasn't identified previously? Some of the projects that we did with the school traffic circulation study are, you know, a lot of those projects also were in the T S P, but some of them weren't, some of them are a little more. Specific towards pedestrian and bicycle. Uh, but I felt that project is identified and put a highlight on those crossings and intersections and things, so I. I don't know, I, I don't want to be repetitive, I don't want to dismiss it, so.
So, is it possible we don't need it as part of our strategic plan, that four point one, is it possible that? I mean, is it necessary that we have that goal or is it something we just, not like we did? I'm just asking.
That's what I'm saying, I think it seems to me that we've already kind of have that. It's already, it was kind of redundant, but like.
Yeah.
It's like for me.
I mean, I think it'd be more appropriate to talk about, you know, identify safety-related projects within the T S P and, or prioritize safety-related. But then you're talking about you're gonna prioritize those over like congestion projects in the T S P or, you know, there's.
So many.
So, I don't know. I do feel like there's room to increase the awareness of the T S P with the council, right, like many of you are. Are newer, I don't know that we've ever spent time like going through the whole thing, cause the T S P was in place before many of you came onto the council. So maybe it's just increasing awareness and, et cetera, in there. We typically do that more at the staff levels, we're building the C I P that we then bring to the public works committee. So we don't typically bring all of that process to the entire city council, we kind of limit that a little bit more to public works committee, but.
Massive.
It's a lot, so, I don't know, I don't know how involved the entire council wants to be in that process or if you want to rely on the public works committee to be looking through those projects or.
This is like tangentially related, but it's related to the theme of just, I, like I do. Wish, and I wish this in the, like the previous iteration of strategic plan, that we had more of a strategic plan for the police department. Cause I feel like we get way down in the weeds in strategic plan with public works and with like finance and admin to the point of like. You know, post things on the website or like fix this one path in a park and then for police, it's just like. Make it safe, you know, I mean. And I, it just, I don't know, just in general, it feels like there's not a lot of engagement with police department. As a city council, we just sort of send them a check for like two million dollars and hope it all goes well. Um, and I mean, I'm being flippant, but just, I, I think just even hearing more about like, what is their long-term vision, how are they gonna improve their services, how are they, you know, like. I'm not saying they aren't doing well right now, but just, I think reading over this, like. There's one goal in one theme that has anything to do.
Four point three, point two and five point, or four point four point one, right?
Oh, I guess I meant just the one goal.
Oh, not objectives, okay, okay.
I, I get that, I think some of that's just the nature too, I mean, you make this a matter for the, for the judge and the, you know.
I would make the same argument, that is the only thing I want to talk about though.
Like, you know, but a lot of that is just the nature, they are more reactive, right, their, their role is to like enforce laws. And hold people accountable and some of that is more reactive than proactive, right, I mean, there's.
Right.
There's definitely more proactive things we can do, but. I don't know, but, I, I agree, but I think some of that's just the nature of like planning the parks, it's very proactive.
Right.
As opposed to reactive.
Right.
The nature of it makes it.
Right.
More reactive, it seems.
I guess, it also just feels like every time I engage with the police department, I learn about some actually really cool, great thing they're doing that I had no idea they were doing or. Ever, you know, and it's just like, I'm the mayor, how did I, like if I didn't know they were doing this. I doubt anyone knows, you know, just sort of that like, even the sort of just like communication of like, here are the goals we're working towards, here's how we're planning to get there in the same way we do with. Other departments, and I realize I'm also not on the police committee, but just like. Yeah, I mean, we were even kind of joking in our, like one of our little breakout sessions when we were reading over the former. Public safety one, it was, it was just, I think it's a very Ken Rubin kind of thing too. Just like, the goals for the police department are to force laws and it's like. Great, just like the goals of public works is to make. The infrastructure, you know, like I just like, we wouldn't, we wouldn't do that for a department, so I just. I don't know, I'm not trying, I don't want to like micromanage or anything, but even just hearing more and then kind of understanding and how can you support and everything, but.
We're even down through newsletter, I mean, just for, if we're looking to inform the public.
Yeah.
Are we looking, are you looking to inform the city council or are you looking to inform the public?
Both, I guess, I mean, I think, I think it's important for the city council to know what's going on. Um, and I mean, I think, to be honest, part of it is just the fact that like, the city council has the most. Discretion over the general fund and far and away, most of the general fund goes to the police department and it feels like. It just sort of. There's a little pipe of money that just goes across the.
The street.
Yeah, a big pipe of money that just goes across the street and I want to be clear, I think they're spending it well. This is not like a me coming after the police department or anything, it's just, it's always been like, sort of same as the judge, I mean, that's like almost a separate branch of government, but like. Just, just, it is like a major city operation that I feel like. We don't really know what's going on over there most of the time. Like, sometimes I know as much about the police department as I know about the fire department, but we, we, we run the police department. But anyway, uh, this is, this is my little, this is sort of separate, I just think. City council is more the like public works, financial administration council and then we just send money to the police department, but, yeah.
Well, I'm on the police committee, no, I could definitely do a little page of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That we have a bit more at stakeness.
Not at a meeting.
Well, no one said.
Four, five months, I think.
Well, I guess that's kind of part, and like I know even like, you know, that's something like Chief Rubin would talk about, it was like, oh, it's not really a committee where we talk about policy, we just kind of like. Give updates and it's like.
Why?
I think some of it is the structure of law enforcement, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like to be accredited, they have to follow.
Right, totally.
I think that some of it is that.
And that policy's not made by our citizens.
You can't have really input in that and still participate in like accreditation, like you can have little tweaks, but. I think some of it is that, it's just the structure is very different, I mean, even Chris and I, we have that same sort of relationship where we're checking in. Um, but to be fair, I, I think you have goals, but I think, and I think you know about them, just staffing. That's been a huge thing and that's been a huge goal is staffing, how they're gonna have coverage and that has been a big animal. And taken a lot of the efforts and I think now, you know, that the chief would tell you that they're moving for like. Better training opportunities and so, and I think the police committee that he'll talk about that, um, this will be at our next meeting.
I appreciate the end, at the end of our city council. Papers, if you give us an update on what you've been doing the last month and occasionally there's some things that the police have done. I think it'd be really great to just put some more building in. One officer got his D E I endorsement and to put that, I mean, that's a pretty major thing and. If we all knew about it, that'd be great, so just even that would be a helpful, or if he would come once in a while and maybe give you an update, he's busy, we're busy, I don't know how to fit that in, but.
But I think you're talking about a little bit of my point too, like when you read the management report, it's like. Public works did these twelve things, including installing one new bench in this part and then police, it's like, hired a new officer. It's like, I know you did more than that this month. But, and I don't know, I, again, I don't, it's not like, I don't, I don't want to come across as like micromanaging at all, it just, it is. I also wanted to make sure they're getting the attention they deserve and like, if they do have needs, that, that the city council's thinking about those and they're like. It just, you know, I don't know, this might be a conversation for another time, but.
Yeah, it's still kind of mixed on, I mean, they, they also get a write-up in the Flemish news every week on their police log of all the things going through and it's like. The city's not producing that, but we are, we're giving them the information and that's a full, and we don't give one of those for public works, like what'd you do this week, you know? So I just think still a lot of what they do is reactive and I'll be a, a little careful here, I, I think that that's a good thing, like I don't necessarily want my. Police department to be overly proactive in what they're doing because. Of the political agenda that, you know, they've been given from either me or from the mayor and the city council. I think we want to be really careful that they have a job and a task that they're assigned to do and we don't necessarily want that to be overly political or politicized. Or policy-driven, right, I mean, our, the policy is a safe community where people feel safe, they feel welcome, they feel that. And to your point, they're obviously doing something right because Flemish is a very safe place to live and I think. Most people you walk up and down the street would tell you that they feel safe in our community, so I, I think a lot of things are working well there and I. I would attribute some of that to the fact that. It's often other cities that giving direction and policy to our police department, telling them how to do their job, I think that they're looking at. Best practices, accreditation recommend, you know, requirements and that they're doing those things that they're required to do, so I. We can always communicate better, so I, I, I think that point is well taken, but I, I think that. Communication of what they're working on and priorities that they've got are good, I would caution us to be. Too scriptive on the things that we want to see them doing. Um, outside of, you know, we think traffic speeds on the highway are still too high, we would like to see more engagement and more patrolling. There and we're not talking about, hey, we want to see twenty citations a week, but I think we're talking about, we'd like to see more traffic enforcement along the highway.
But I guess that's the kind of stuff I'm talking about and it feels like, that's rarely been something we've really like put. In strategic plan, it's more just been like these general like improved safety and it's like, eh, you know, like we don't put like improve infrastructure, we put like. With these specific infrastructure projects.
Yeah, I think that, we've had some in there, but.
Sure, I mean, yeah, I'm not, it's not, it's not like we never talk about the police, it's just, I feel like it's their. Imbalance, anyway, we can, I don't mean to get us all off track, but.
Go on to four point two?
Yeah. Does anyone?
Are we striking for one or did we want to re-craft that into something? Or strike it?
I guess just, I guess that was the reason I had kind of brought up that of like, cause to your point, like I think we would like to make sure there's like visible and. Highway and that there is, you know, like the community's aware, so I guess I was kind of thinking.
Fine with that, it's a little.
Yeah, sure, sure.
About highways, you know, speed on the highway and because, again, when you talk to multiple residents, that's the complaint you get is.
Four point three, point two talks about the radar and I think that would.
We can't put our radar signs on the highway other than use specific locations, so we're much more limited on the highway on using the radar signs. On the south and then one at the form.
That would still give us something.
Priorities, I think.
So this one's a little tricky for me, cause the chief, he wrote it down, like it's his idea, so it's sort of his policy, but I, I also agree with. Chris's. Statement that like, I don't want to just start meddling in their policy and play like. You know, like, and I don't want to have to go back and be like, well, when, how is, how have you done it following your, you know what I mean? I almost, and I, I talked about this in the small group exercise, but I'd almost rather be like. Helping them reduce the barriers to the projects that they're trying, like, what are you trying to get done and what, what? How does this city's, what's our role in that? And I wouldn't know what that, I mean, I remember. Short one vest for a long time and that was wild, I was like, can't we just like pass a hat around or something like? You know what I mean, like, we, I mean, I know they're expensive, but it's like, everybody chips in fifty bucks or something and he doesn't have to worry about dying. Important to me and so. But, nobody, I didn't know that and it seemed like the kind of thing somebody would mention that the police are short of, I, you know, an important.
And I, it was.
Didn't want to buy one for Ken and we just.
But I think, Ken said we got it planned or something, but it was.
Didn't buy one for him because we didn't want him showing up.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Sorry, Ken, if you're watching.
Yeah. Beachside danger and that, but. Um, I don't know, so I, I would, I'd love to increase that engagement, but I also don't want to start specifying these objectives about what they're needed to do.
Right, and I, I just want to, I don't, I don't want us to start going in and being like, enforce these laws, but not these laws or anything like that, which is like. Like, just the general sort of operational.
Can we, how can we?
Other city departments, I'm personally, but.
I think you hear some of that for budgeting as well.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a lot of work, those conversations.
Yeah.
On a positive note, uh, I have heard from community that they are seeing them, they're more visible now that they have a full staff and I think this. Really good thing and I believe when we were asking about the cars, they said they have one of the highest, um, the lowest crime rates right now and. That sort of thing would be nice to know and, you know, brag about a little bit, that, uh, if there's good stuff going on. And that's where those council reports from, when we have time in city council meetings for council reports. It would be nice to be able to talk about those things that come up and count, and those meetings that we hold, police committee meetings that we haven't had time in the past to. Really go over because the meetings have gone so long, it'd be nice to have time for the council reports.
Yes.
That those things, cause they are discussed, I've been on the police committee for years and they are discussed, the police, the crime rates, the, the needs of the. The obstacles and needs that they have, they're all discussed, but.
Yeah.
Time to relay that information that's been lacking.
I very much agree with that. So what are we gonna do with four point one?
So are we gonna, are we gonna talk with Chief Gersky or are we gonna take it off, are we gonna modify it, what's the plan?
Yeah, I mean, I like having a goal specific, if we're talking traffic, safety plan and traffic concerns, I. My prime, my primary concern and goal there that I've talked to. Chief Gersky about is traffic enforcement on highway twenty.
Yeah.
Visible, visible highway.
Yeah.
Traffic enforcement.
Yep.
Um, and I've got that with visible traffic enforcement along our school areas as well, and so they've made some changes in scheduling to ensure.
Yeah.
That not all of our officers are in a briefing from seven to eight o'clock every single morning, but, but at least one of them can be out and then around the schools at that timeframe, so. I mean, there's some internal stuff that we've done, but I'm not saying I want this to be report card, I, I think, but increasing traffic enforcement, I think is a good rule. That we can have and at some point we could say, you know, we feel like we're a. Well-known speed trap and that if you're coming through town, you better hit the brakes or if not, you will get cited and I think at some point that goal could be met. I just think that might be something that takes a little bit of time.
That staffing is.
Better.
Way better than.
Yeah.
We're still short one.
Getting better.
For the record, we're still down one, but.
That's right.
We're, we're working on it though, yeah.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, no, I'm gonna be quiet, um, okay, so do you feel like you have an idea of where to take the little pillowcase?
Increase visible traffic enforcement increase.
You're like, you're like, yeah, visible.
Traffic enforcement along highway twenty?
Yeah, yeah.
And the school, you could say, and the, and around the schools?
Yeah, okay, okay, I think I want to follow up with Counselor Andrade on exactly what her thoughts were on the evidence-based P. But. Okay, four point two, community awareness for emergency preparedness, um, I know we're gonna talk more about a specific option for that later, but. I, I feel like it's something I've heard from a lot of counselors on individually. People have on their minds these days, so, um, how can we sort of. Make sure people know what the plans are, I think has been the, the thought that's come up a lot, like, we, we have, like, there are plans. Um, as Chelsea or Rich would make sure you know, but I think the, the goal is more to like. Is more to like, make the word out and make sure people understand that and that, I think, you know, the thing. I always say is just like, if there is some major disaster, the city is not going to take care of you. Like you need to be ready to take care of yourself, you know, maybe the police or the fire department could get to you eventually, but like. Trying to help get the word out on that and that's not because we're not prepared, it's just like, you know.
No, but but those are what the town halls that.
Right, exactly, yeah, yeah.
Wild, they have the wildfire preparedness. Town hall, that was a great opportunity for Benton County and O D F and us and. You know, what are we doing? Um, and that would, that would, those would be great actions of the project, yeah.
Yeah.
The community is, they're very interested.
Yeah.
Well, what what happens if, if the little fault line down here ruptures, what are we gonna do?
Right, yeah. I almost view it the same way as like the visible traffic enforcement of like, I, we are enforcing traffic. We just want it to be more visible and make the community more aware of it and I think it's kind of the same thing, we have emergency preparedness plans and preparation, but like. Make sure the community knows that and is thinking about it, I don't think. Yeah.
I don't, I I may not know all the plan, but where are we gonna shelter? If we've got people with wildfire being evacuated from their homes, I mean, I don't think our plan is complete. And that's maybe what I'm gonna talk about later, but but I don't think we're ready yet, I don't think we're okay to say. We're good on this, cause I don't think we are.
Well, you you have to.
Go ahead, go ahead, no.
They have to talk with Benton County as well because they are the emergency manager for the county, yeah, and they do actually have. We have hazards, we, I'm sorry, natural hazards mitigation plan, we have C W P P. So there are all sorts of plans already in place, of which Flemish has been a part of that as well. Um, now, these plans aren't necessarily all public facing and they're massive. And it takes a long time, so I think again, the community engagement of saying what those plans are, so you're not left, but do we actually have a plan? Well, we do, well, what is the plan, you know what I mean? And then it kind of clears up that question, yeah.
Yeah, and I think that a lot of it is, it's too big for. Like just the average community member to digest and having the messages of preparing.
Yeah.
Two weeks ready, like those are really good things that you could do that. When it comes down to it, the emergency managers are going to be putting the plans into action. And setting those things up, but people will be better prepared and they'll be aware. Um, you know, that something could happen and that we've tried to prepare the best that we can, helping our neighbors out, our neighbors they can't, so I.
I mean, it's definitely.
Yeah.
Something we could get to the public, so the pieces of it that, here's the prep guide, here's. Here's what to expect, this is wind bent and alert, this is how that works. If there's something that happens, but I mean, the the plan calls for volcanoes and earthquakes and. Windstorms and ice storms and, I mean, there's so many different wildland and. Fires and et cetera, there's so many different facets of it. Um, but I agree, there's there's just the disconnect between getting that down into the people's hands. That's right, cause everybody talks about get a go-kid, get a go-kid, get a go-kid, get a go-kid, well, what is, what what does that mean? We're at the go-kid, you know?
I know. And I've gotten two people to build some, but that's good, that's good.
Um, so I guess how do we feel about the specific objectives underneath four point two?
I think they're all great.
Yeah, I think they're all great.
All right. Are we all good with everything in four point two then?
Yes.
Okay, four point three, clear policies in support of our safety related infrastructure. Objective of moving the truck route to thirteenth street, we just talked about radar enforcement. Um, and then. Improving streets.
Yep, I just got my straight again.
Okay.
I feel like four three five is a little bit more of an action item, maybe the more appropriate objective would be to. Identify projects within the school traffic and safety.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Plan and then that could be an action item underneath that.
Yeah.
And I thought there was something, there's other items. Is there not something in here about the school chart, I thought I saw something.
Well, and there's some things that are prohibiting us is that turn on the thirteenth street, so I, I mean, I don't know, we don't have the limit list for that, right? But more than just saying move it, we've gotta do something about it first.
But I think the objective or the goal would be to move it. Okay.
I'll just, I'll just add real quick, just maybe I don't wanna try to talk about this group or not, but we. We did apply for a grant last year with O dot to do a community action plan. Which is what O dot requires you to have in place in order to apply for their grants for. Um. Safety-related projects. So it's going to be very similar to the school traffic and circulation study we really did, although it won't be limited just around the school areas, it will be citywide. And it will be in the format that O dot wants it in, but it's gonna be a lot of those projects that we identified and we went through the whole process and we just did. We're gonna have to redo that, hopefully with O dot grant money. To put an action plan in place because we have to have an action plan for us to get funding to get money for. Seventeenth Street and Thirteenth Street and all of these projects that we've identified. We'll get some grant money to help with those projects if we have an action plan, if we don't have an action plan, then we take all the projects ourselves and so. Um, unfortunately, we didn't get funded for that, I threw a couple of additional things on there. That I think confused folks a little bit and they're always just competitive and what I've heard is a little bit of a, it's okay. From the state was most, it's not uncommon for cities to have to apply a couple of years before they get it. And this was the first year that we'd applied for it, so if we apply this next year, our chances are greatly enhanced that we'll get it the second. So. Um, I think it's okay to talk about the school traffic circulation study, cause that is the document we have in place now and we have. Made some good agreements with the school district to help prioritize some of those projects and the school's done some things, we've done some things, you see it?
Yes. Four point three point five.
And do we need to add something about the O dot action plan to the strategic plan or do we not?
I mean, it'd be an action item to apply for, actually, you know, funding to um, create a action plan, but. Again, we don't need to only do things that are on here, but it's definitely under safe community, I think it'd be a great action item that we could do, so. But well, I mean, that's the kind of stuff that staff will look to add in there, we'll find an objective where it fits and say. You know, it's an action item we're gonna do, so. Kind of get we go under emergency preparedness, I think it'll go under something else.
You're saying move four point three point one instead as a more of an action under four point three point five.
How am I better?
And could someone help me understand four point three point four? These words, how look like for action items and such?
Yeah, well, I feel like four point three point four and four point three point six, like I feel like four point three point six could be an action under four point three point four. Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah.
It was four point two kind of stuff.
Four point three point six as an action item under four point three point four.
Four point three point seven also be under there?
Yeah, sure.
Fire hydrant strategy and street lighting all would be.
Could four point three point eight also be under there?
Yeah, I'm saying all that. Yeah, fire.
Tree lighting, emergency preparedness, or is it just like livability?
You ever try to hook up the fire?
Yeah, there you go.
Not lights too, I mean.
There's a lot of street lighting.
Objective, street lighting.
Could that mean like safety for people walking down the street?
There's a lot of different safety related, but that's not emergency prepared.
I was just trying to make.
I I appreciate that you.
We have our own.
But yeah, I think street lighting needs to. It's a problem currently, other than I would point to like North Wall Street, but they've added some interventions, but. I don't hear that complaint a lot from people, but in fact, I heard a complaint from someone that we had too much.
Too much, right? Yeah.
Our dark skies thing, energy.
Yeah. Could we?
Did you remove it?
I was gonna say, so.
Needs sweeping, yeah. Or just take that down.
Yeah, 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 okay, so strike four point three point eight and do four point three point seven, four point three point six as.
Action items.
Okay.
As, yeah, uh, my mouth is. Okay, great. Um, are we good with that and then to move on to four point four?
Yeah.
Okay, you all know my thoughts on this one, so I'll be quiet. Like I, any, any other, I just feel like the action item means nothing. Reduce property crime by continuing proactive policing effort.
I think that's a standard that we've already set and I think it's.
Probably a smart goal.
Right, it's a thing that we already do, but.
Right.
The right, I think it's the right thing to do, but I think it's all good, like.
Sorry, you're talking about four point four?
Specifically the uh, action item under.
Yeah, sorry, we're on four point four now.
Four point four.
Um.
And then this action reduce, uh, the action under four point, four point one.
Cause all of these, all of these have been said even earlier, they're just kind of the same thing.
Right, right.
So this is all on the previous one that we just carried over, so this is kind of the.
Cause this, wasn't this like the only one that used to be under like public safety?
Yeah, we had one goal and it was ensure public safety, protect people, property and forest laws and then we tried to cover all three of those, so.
Yeah. Cause I feel like, yeah, so four point, four point two, we already have that.
And three is we, we already.
Yeah, we have that.
So.
And that's up at, yeah, and you can get in county, cause all of those, yeah.
So it's just four point four point one, but that's the one that annoyed me because it felt really.
You know what that means?
Yeah, I think we're gonna strike it, I think.
We're just getting rid of it.
I mean, I, it it literally just says.
Right, I know, I I guess I just feel like we got rid of that brother, like we got rid of like.
I mean, the only reason I could think of to keep it is if staff wanted it in order to be able to add action items as they come up, but.
But we're kind of looking at it on one year.
Yeah.
And I, I do think our police department.
Yeah.
Goals. For within some other areas, traffic and. You know, human.
Cause I guess that's my thing, like I feel like there, we still need to have a place in here for like other police related things. Like I don't wanna get rid of.
But what are those things currently, what, what objectives do you?
Well, like maintain full staffing or like. Efforts or something, that was kind of bad, I don't know.
I do think potentially, Chris, if you're, I know that the chief had. One or two things that I think would fit well under this that are not, keep everything safe, but that are. Things that are, that they're actively trying to look into the future to work on.
So let's keep the goal for now and then I'll work with my management team to come up with some objectives and action items that I'll talk to the chief and see. What he wants to do there, the one that jumps out to me is that action item under four four two, identify missing sidewalks, repair properties, install sidewalks. Do we want to install it somewhere else, under the? Needed public interest, correct?
Well, I feel like. Four point three point three, monitor improvement of the. Lightning adding sidewalks by.
Exactly, it's already up there.
Four point three point three.
Yeah.
That's what I was looking for, thanks.
On sidewalks that are settled and uneven or broken, it's a trip hazard. That responsibly belongs to the property owner, my understanding, but we don't enforce that.
We do enforce. Absolutely.
But usually someone has like, someone has like complain about it, right?
Regulate first.
Yeah, right, call and complain, yeah.
I'm not gonna do that. I will not turn to my neighbors, but, or myself.
Mostly identify where they are located or.
But I I tripped walking home from my high school in the dark.
Does feel like maybe you should tell someone.
Drop me an anonymous note.
Post it, tell me and then I'll tell him.
You go trip yourself. Walk in front of this house. I I've known.
You're right.
Yeah, we do. Not just being direct, I mean, we do enforce that, we do reach out to property owners and we write them a letter and we. With a problem and we require them to pull out panels and replace panels on sidewalk, we do that regularly, a couple times a year, we'll do that. When they reach a point where it's a safety concern. We we have adopted new policies to allow property owners to grind sidewalks, it's not a long-term solution. It's a more cost-effective, short-term solution that will sometimes work. Um, sometimes not, so we've allowed that, um, I think only maybe one homeowner's taken advantage of that. Allowance, but we do enforce that when we do to get complaints and there's an obvious issue that's a trip hazard, so.
Okay, um, so we're good with four point four then, Chris will come back to us with some suggestions. Um, four point five, upgrade needed public infrastructure, this is where we moved, I think a lot of the. Yeah, I know it's like, it looks like it mostly worked with all the water stuff. Water treatment plant, water lines, water availability. Something about waters, it's all the objective about water or?
Well, I think it gives us a space to add other projects.
Well, that's the end of the document.
Guys, today that I had a resident come to Muffet's today that actually read through this. Grant version, the whole draft version a bit and complimented the council. And then gave a very nice compliment and say, I was super impressed by the appendix of all the stuff that's happened in a while.
Yes.
You know, since twenty eighteen, it's like, man, you guys have done a ton of stuff in the city, it's really. Pressing to look through all of the stuff that's been done and then. We talked to him, it was like, yeah, I think that after this version, or what we might like put a pin and like attach the appendix to the. You know, twenty eighteen through twenty twenty five version and then we start kind of a new one, cause appendix is getting a little long in the tooth, so we may. End appendix A and we'll start, you know, I think we've talked about. Repurposing and retooling this a little bit and I think this version's a great transition. Um, but I think that, you know, next year would be a good time that rather than take all the stuff that we've done.
Yeah.
And transfer it over, that we'll just start, kind of restart that with kind of a new like. Obviously, you'll put a reference, this one, sure, and we'll call it appendix A as objectives, actions completed from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty five. At some point it becomes, have to even get all the way through, right, but anyway. It was a nice compliment from a member of the community that's been involved in the community for years and they were very impressed with. How we've grown it and really like they did get more project focused and really just liked the direction. His comment specifically was, well, if it was same format as it was eight or ten years ago and you didn't change anything, well. You must not be using that, right, cause everything that you use gets changed. It's better, right, I'm like, that's what I feel like, it's evolving and getting better, we're not just changing it, we're improving it, so, yeah. Thank you, so thank you to all of you for supporting the app.
Really does help. Yeah, thanks for, I know this is what our like third or fourth meeting with Chris thing now, so. And we will have another one now. Incorporated, but yes.
Yeah, so staff will sit down again, just to be clear, so we'll sit down as the management team, we will. Make all the fixes that we've talked about and then we will start working on action items that we believe we can do this year. We'll look as far out as next year and maybe two years out on some of the objectives. If we've got specific projects we wanna do, but we know we can't do for financial constraints or other reasons like this year or next year, we may go out three to four years with them. Um, so we'll work on that over the next month, I ca- I won't commit that we'll get this back to you in the March meeting, that's too soon, but. Um, I will commit that by the April, April meeting, we'll have it to you, which will be before we get too hot and heavy into the budget stuff, so. We we will first identify the budget implication type things, things that are gonna need funding this year, we'll make sure we have a discussion about that. That might come to you in a separate memo, more likely you'll just see that in the budget and we'll talk about it, it's in the strategic plan and. It's a priority for the council this year, but I wouldn't expect to get. But I wouldn't expect to get something back on this until prior to April meeting, so. Talk through that?
Oh, yeah, but yes, yeah, that's our next agenda, sure, was there any other?
It sounded like he was saying, okay, like we're done?
Actually says nine thirty P M in there, not.
Seven to nine thirty, but we started.
I know, it doesn't say ninety minutes, it says nine thirty P M. It also says, I think, regular meetings, um, anyway, so, okay, any other thoughts on the strategic plan? All right, then councillor Crocker wanted to speak about um, some emergency management things, which I think. Tie well in with our conversations.
Please don't take offense at what I'm gonna say, but I brought this up several times and people said, oh no, Ben, can I take care of it? We don't need to do this then. And I get frustrated, and when I went and talked to Brian Lee, who was the head of the Benton County, he said. If every community would help out and build their own emergency response, it would help. And so he said, this is a brand new thing, it's the volunteer corps. And it all actually fits right into the four point four point three support and encourage. Community emergency response team and I don't feel like that has been supported or encouraged. I've talked to some of the cert members at some of our happenings and they just encourage us to join, but. Um, I don't feel like we've had um, much else other than that, so anyway, when I went to speak with him, he. They had just passed this the night before and he encouraged strongly that we develop our own uh, volunteer corps, our own team. He said to start with a team of twelve and we agree, or he, he said mask care and sheltering. Volunteer donation management and pet and live livestock sheltering were the three things that we should concentrate first. And that um, actually the pet and livestock person that wrote the whole county's thing is Julie McLennan, who lives right here in Philomath. In fact, Brian lives here in Philomath, so I do feel, I feel really good that we have some Philomath um, citizens that would. Support this and whereas maybe Julie doesn't need to be on this team, she can develop some of her older rage kits. It is under the auspices of the uh, Benton County, uh, Benton County, so that I'm, my understanding is that's. Who would co- cover the insurance for the volunteers, they have the same program that we just approved. Where you have to sign up to be a volunteer and if you pass, then they will cover for emergency stuff. Um, they will do all the training, the training is. It's uh, two to four times um, a year. It's not very much and it's two to three hours a time, so it's not like you're committing your whole life to city council. It's, yeah, so you're not asking that people do become a cert training, yes, certified emergency response training. You're not, you're asking them to do the other, correct? I am happy to go find volunteer, I am happy to do the work behind that, I'm happy to help schedule the training times and. Um, but I kinda would like. This is just me and maybe this isn't right, but city council to um, show support for this. So that it's maybe a little more official that way, rather than just Diane's off doing her thing. Um, I would like it to be approved, I guess, by the city council that we, we do this and um. I talked to Su- but here's one of the issues, um, I talked to Susan Halliday about using the high school. And she gave permission for that, but I also understand there's another place that might be being used and nobody really knows what, what's gonna happen. Or which place, so it would be really nice if we could solidify that information and get some management people in place. To have some training and if it's at the high school, I got permission to use that in June. Uh, after school's out, so that we can actually do the training, so the volunteers can actually see the facility. And I'm assuming that would be one of the first responsibilities we'd have. We don't know whether there will be power or water or cellphone use or anything to even get the word out to people and that's where. It would be really great to have this in place and then announce, you know, post to the community. If you're in an emergency, your house is, you know, you're being asked to evacuate, this is where you should go. And that's where you can get some information and people will be there to help you. Uh, we could talk about go bags, we could talk about all the uh, personal preparation that families can do. And uh, but I really believe there are people here in Philomath that would love to get involved in this and help out. And have something a little more established. I know my mind works differently, but I'm thinking, well, if there's an earthquake and the people in the house can't get to Philomath to help us, we're on our own. We need to have at least a plan in place or an idea, I mean, I, I just. I wouldn't know where to go right now here in Philomath, if we were cut off from Carvalis. Um, maybe I can stay at my house, but maybe I couldn't, so I don't know, uh, different, different uh, events. Affect different neighborhoods and places, so. Is that reasonable ask to um, have permission to go ahead and work on this and get some volunteers and get them trained? To fit into the Benton County plan?
It's great, I guess, just as long as if we support it officially, does that make us have any kind of liability?
Uh, I mean, it sounds like it would be housed under.
Right.
County's emergency management, I think. Um. From my perspective, it's what is staff's involvement, like what is the city's involvement with it? So the city council may say, we support it, go ahead, Diane, what is our involvement with that? Like as staff, I guess, because we already communicate and work a lot with Benton County Emergency Management, so. The only thing is an annex to that and Diane would, I guess that's my question.
Is this in the, is this applica- this information in the newsletter, will this be, is this?
Well, not, no, not, no, not yet. Diane just brought this to us.
So, I, I have a little bit at the end of this because the fire department, we support a cert. And there are several community members that have taken part in cert training over the last several years, we. We provided the, the facilities and then I do fire extinguisher training as part of cert training, for example, through the fire department. So there are, there are aspects of support that are sort of tangible that way, um. But the fire department doesn't do any instruction, management of that team or, I mean, we have. Uh, it's, we already have, we already have our mission, right? And then a lot of people that are already gonna be engaged are already working as part of the fire department, right? So, um, that, that's, that's the only thing about this. That, that sometimes is a little difficult because you really do need to find somebody in the community, honestly, that says, I'm it. I'm gonna establish a Philomath cert, that's one aspect, right, of all of this, it's just one. But I'm, I'm gonna do like the Ren community, somebody in Ren said, I'm the for the Ren community. Um, and ultimately, that's what's, that's what.
Adair Village have nothing and so he thinks, but we're bigger and he thinks it would be appropriate. My only thing on the cert is I've gone to the cert tables like at the night out and the farmer's market and stuff and it's always been. Some of my friends from Carvalis working at the.
So there's a, there's actually in the, right now, there's, there's a Carvalis cert. And they're their own entity and they don't actually, they, they work around or with Benton County cert. But Benton County cert is their own thing, so there's literally two different teams and then part of Benton County cert. Is a Philomath contingent. But they're, they're.
I have not seen them at all.
Well, no, because, well, y- yes and no, a lot of the people. Yes, so it's, it's kind of one of those things that people go through the training. And just like anything else, there's just a very large attrition, right? People go through, I've got my little badge and then, and then that's it, right? So, um, I mean, there's, yes, cause that's a whole. Struggling with is to make sure, cause they've got a very strong core, but it just doesn't really expand much. And they really have been trying to concentrate some work here in Philomath, cause they do see, this is just a perfect place for it, because, yeah, but.
Pam Wilson used to be a teacher at the middle school, but she was in carousels on the clear other side and she's a big member of the. And she's the one that said, you guys need to get some more people involved here and, you know, so, so. This is my, where I'm, I'm hearing and yes, the be two weeks ready, is that an independent sort of.
Each individual? So that would be something that, couldn't we support some kind of an. Um, a class where individuals. Town hall or whatever people can come and find out about, cause that makes individual, and I like the point of empowering them. I can be ready for my family independently to be two weeks ready and know what I need to do and know what I need to have and, um.
I um, talked to him and I said, you know, I've been doing this food drive and we reached out to the area churches, I said. Could we do this with the churches? And he said, yes, that would be a great plan as they would come in and teach them as a group, because. Getting people to come to a town hall is not always easy, but it might be easier in smaller groups like that. Or the four H or the scouts or whatever and I think um, there's quite a bit that we could do to just. I'm not certainly suggesting we take over or change anything, that we just have our own people here, so.
Yeah.
If we could open up the high school and let people come in and, and. Stay if they need to, then we will have a plan on how to do that and how to feed them and they've got the food, they've got all the equipment, but. Getting it here is, um, it might take a while, it may not, they might be able to come right here and set us all up, but they'll still want our volunteers to help them.
So, I think just for tonight then, if we just kind of give you our blessing. And then I wonder almost if we could then put you on the agenda for like two months from now or something, just to kind of. Give a quick report back about like how it's going, if there's anything else you need, anything else the city can, would that work for just for tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
Or May, maybe?
Sure, yeah, that works. Okay, yeah, we'll say.
Well, Brian, it might be May before I pull stuff together, but.
Yeah, should we, we can do that in May, okay.
And I.
Believe that couple that you and I were at coffee with.
That's true, you know.
It would be right up their alley.
Yeah.
Somebody that's, that's just wanting, wants to get engaged at a very, a higher level.
Yeah.
And wanting to take something on at the community level.
Yeah.
And, and that's what you really need and then to be able to liaison with the emergency management with the city and. And that's, that's the connection.
And I'm guessing also some of our retired fire department would be helpful in some ways. He said it would be great to get some teachers that would be willing to come because when kids are coming to a shelter. To see a face that they know is very comforting in a scary situation, so it just seems like.
Yeah.
It would not be all that hard to find people interested.
Well, I agree and I think as a city leadership, we have some responsibility to understand the process if something happens. People will undoubtedly ask us, like, what, what do we do? Then. I like to be able to go. I have to say.
Things that we've passed out before, he said we're still at like thirty to forty percent of the people that have signed up for the alert on their phone, so. I would also love for us to become a little more active and we've done it, but we can do it again at the music in the parks or the um. Markets or whenever we are in a situation where we can talk to public just.
We would, we would be a lot easier for us to really get the word out if the Benton County Sheriff's Office wanted to sponsor a music in the park evening. The Benton County Sheriff himself could sponsor one.
Or we could just invite her to talk.
Yeah, fine, um, okay, so is everyone okay with us kind of giving Diane our, our blessing, for lack of a better word?
Well, uh, if not, if not, not necessarily a, uh, official city council thing, it's just. That we are supporting.
Yeah.
The building of. Community for.
Yeah, I think that's great. Thank you for bringing this, yeah, yeah. Um, the last thing I'll say then, um, this is here, I got forwarded this, I think. They did it already, do it that what you will, it just wasn't invited, we got it. And then this wasn't on the agenda, cause I just learned about it today, but um, there's, but there's another bill. Um, getting into legislative here and this one is to fund. Facility improvements at small town frolic and rodeos, or specifically rodeos. Small town rodeo, um, it's supposed to be in town with a population of less than twelve thousand. On existing rodeo grounds that need capital improvements and I thought, well, wait a minute. I know, I know, I know a town with less than twelve thousand people that has an existing rodeo ground that needs capital improvements. So, I just wanted to get a quick go ahead, as long as if the council's fine with me submitting some testimony on behalf of the city. I don't think I'm able to actually testify live for that one, just with my schedule, but um, I can at least upload some testimony on behalf of the city.
Frolic and rodeo is providing some. As is many of the other local rodeos, that one, yeah, so many of the small towns, just like us, it's a huge economic development.
Yeah.
Boom or bust and a lot of that infrastructure was built thirty plus years ago and it needs upgrades and stuff, so. Our rodeo grounds aren't that dissimilar than a lot of other small communities that rely on their once a year big events and. One thing we've done well is we're turning it into more of an annual event space with the restrooms and other improvements and stuff, which is, I think.
Year year long.
Year round, year long, yeah, we'll have a year long events, but year round.
Okay, cool, I just wanted to run that past you all, but great, um, anything else for the good of the order? Okay, we'll adjourn, Crystal's like, please. Okay, then we will adjourn at nine oh four P M, thank you all.